Sorry.
User error.
Could you give Mark the opportunity to share?
Yep, sorry. And I will note just for the record that all council is present, just for the minutes that'll be taken. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all. Appreciate the opportunity to come here and work through this package with you guys. Again, thanks so much for the opportunity. We've been working on the project for a while now. And you know, we've been some some bumps along the road. And you know, working through this package is it's something that's been a little bit of a moving target for us. So what the the hope is today is for us to kind of nail down really the ideal ideal goal work plan and to kind of walk through some of the exterior development that we're working on. We previously, through through the efforts, obviously, we paused in the summer of 2020 due to COVID and also ongoing issues around projects, primarily just program related and exterior development. Project and council, as we want to make sure that that pathway of communication is open and that, you know, everyone's a part of the passionate community. So what we hope to do today is just kind of run through a quick recap of the last presentation that we did, which was Space needs Plan. And just where we ended up with the target goals for the project and then go through some comparisons of the floor plan between what we had before in the previous project as it ended in the summer of 2020 and and the program of the floor plan of what it's chapped. Great. And please feel free anytime, just try to strike me free with the conversation. Right, Stack Plan recap. Based on the space need plan that was presented last council meeting, there you go. We had an existing center area that is building currently, which is roughly almost 5,000 square feet, just a little under 4,700. And we worked through a 30-year space needs plan. Found a target goal of 12,700 square feet. That included space to grow your board lease or public safety side and the civic building side as well. We had an increased size for the community room of roughly 2,000 square feet or a little over. And 25, around 2,500 for the offices and an additional 3,900 square feet for back and house circulation, elevators, all that type of thing. And that was based on the Space Needs Report. We presented a number of options, four options in total. One of them including where we were for the previous design, which ended in 2020. The previous design did not take into account a 30-year expansion plan. It was really based on current needs and expected growth to be a 10-year period. So it was not able to meet some square footage requirements that we realized were going to be needed based on various. That project had, or that proposal had roughly 97, 64 total gross square feet. But as we worked through these schemes, the one that's been agreed upon last time was Scheme 2, which is highlighted here, which gets very close to our target goal of 12,700 square feet with a total of 12,760. Some of the numbers kind of fluctuate a little bit. Public safety is a little higher, community room is a little bit higher. But as we work through the plan, you'll see that these numbers no longer stay exactly the same because when we started designing the building, working through adjacencies, you know, square footage has a tendency to increase and decrease as based on Scheme 3 and Scheme 4, we all kind of determined that they were two large buildings and would probably compress our ability to build the project for that, that's kind of important. So we developed that Scheme 2 was really the path we wanted to take. So based on that, we're just going to go ahead and do a quick recap of where the plans were previously in 2020. So this is that kind of rough age shift plan that we had before. With the civic building and city hall components off to the right with a community room. Close to 1,200 square feet, I think it was a little under. We are combining, when you look at the numbers on the right, we're actually combining the community room, kitchen and storage in that community room number because it's all packed. So you see that we have the number of 15,440 space. And it's actually, I hope that the last one we just do, the community repack. Off the left side of the building project, you'll see that we have the the public safety wing. That is a little over 30,000 or 3,000 square feet. And it's a single story. It's essentially the same program that the public safety component has now, but we're putting it into the new building. Pretty much a one-for-one square footage. We realized that this is probably one of the more components is going to be shifting as we go towards the 30-year plan because as it is right now, public safety side really fits their needs perfectly, but doesn't allow for a whole lot of room. Especially in the new building, we took a look at the plan and realized that there's just not a whole lot of room for growth and staffing, there needs for evidence and processing, all of that. So second floor from the previous design, you guys will be familiar with, was primarily all the city hall offices with a small lobby upstairs for public access. Jump into the new plan. This is where I'll just kind of look it up, discuss it. So new plan. This is the current modeled area. Space needs target is 12,700. Where we are is we're just slightly above that as we work through, which actually we feel like is great news, we're at 12,829. That incorporates close to 2,000 square feet for the community space. We have a much larger community room. It's Yeah, sorry. Yeah, 1,600 square feet with the kitchen. And then the kitchen is 1,900. The majority of the rest of the ground floor on the right-hand side is going to be for admin and building and model circulation. And then off to the left side again, it's going to be similar late late program. The police program is going to be broken out rather differently than it was before. We've been working really closely with Chief Martinez on how it best organized because as you'll see in the next slide, we are actually splitting that police program now. So the primary components that you'll see on the ground floor for the police department are elements that have to be right off the ground floor, right up the back entry, which would be interview, process day, recording, all of that information that is really not necessarily office focused, but more service focused, which would be kind of a flow of their approach. It really kind of helps cut their program into two specific components. Within the police department, there is an internal care for their own circulation so that they don't have to be liable to the public side. So they can do that. Off of this main lobby here in the middle, you'll see that we do have three public restrooms. One is directly adjacent to the community room on the north side. And we have two directly off the south lobby. Now, we do have vestibules in this building now, which weren't before. So we actually have two restrooms directly in that vestibule space, which is great because previously we had kind of a public restroom to pack that in, a little rear room building. And when we were talking initially, you know, two years ago about how do we want to bring public restrooms into this project? It's really nice because now we're able to bring it right out the entry. Just quickly to get it out.
One thing with that too, we talked and we talked with Shannon about this law is providing the opportunity for that community room to break down into smaller rooms. So, you know, we, if you see or envision some movable wall that would go out the, essentially the north side of the south lobby, I'm going to point up here. So if there was a movable wall here and here, we could essentially break the community room into three spaces. And so by doing the restrooms off of the south lobby there, that front one can be a very sort of public room that can be rented without being in the rest of the building. So you have access to two restrooms through that lobby. You really don't have to get into the rest of the facility at all. It's big enough to have an exit, one exit right out to the main street. And so it's very sort of self-contained space that way. And that's, you know, primary reason I think that those restrooms are there. In addition, when we talk about removing the existing building exterior and providing public parking on the west side of the building, that's going to become really the main entry for the building. Previously, we had envisioned the north side of the building really being the public entry because most would be coming in from the parking lot. Now that will be a private parking. So that'll be more of a letting the staff entrance on the front door and it's on Main Street.
Additionally, we have a gate into our community room, the pre-function space, shown in the previous plan. We are hoping to incorporate, you know, history of Carleton, kind of meeting a chamber of Congress along that wall, a very interactive space. And then directly across the reception building, we also have a waiting area. Great. And then the rest of the plan is is really, we have two two main circulation stairs that are required for exiting from the cabin doors. And like I mentioned before, we do have a third stair that's for any penalty getting stair from the police department. And it does need to state that you're, that they're accessed.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
Yep. So that is right in signing my person. Okay, but it's right here.
So that was one of the things we added from the Space Needs Report. Between the Space Needs Report and today's meeting, we've had quite a few meetings with the with Police Chief, with Shannon and with Christie, kind of working through your plan. And so I think just before Christmas, we had presented some, we've kind of worked through a few, made some changes that earlier this week, made a few more changes. And so we were feeling really good that the plan is working for all different functions of the building. That private stair was something, and really why we wanted to have that first meeting with Chief, was to understand when we broke up the public safety side into could they go back out and come in? And really, breaking security didn't seem like the right approach they could take. So we had to add that stair, which changed a little bit of our square footage requirements for the public safety side, but but it still seems to work out really well in the total gross square footage.
Yeah, and you'll see that the primary difference here is we have 3,800, almost 3,900 of public safety for the previous model, our target, it was 3,400. So that is really wrapped up kind of in that, which is there. And you know, to be quite honest, I think we're super happy that we're still very close to our target goal.
But let's talk about the target versus where we are. So the target goal is based on if this type of space needs this much room, right? You take that and then you put it into a building that's trying to be efficient, trying to stack program on top of itself and say, okay, well, we need this downstairs. And so we need, say, 2,500 downstairs, but we only need 1,500 upstairs. Well, you're not going to build the 1,500 more efficiently than you're actually going to build the 2,500 or the 2,000. So you're going to match those two square footages. So when we get to the second floor, I think you'll see the public safety side actually has a lot of room for growth upstairs. But it's just the way the building is structured and the simplicity of that sort of stacking walls, what we really want and what I think you all really want on the outside, which is a very simple sort of brick building that can stack nicely and sort of mimic and represent some of what the existing buildings are. That means, you know, we're not sort of stepping back and creating additional structural problems. So that's where some of the additional square footage comes from too. So the 3,800 isn't just from adding a stair, it's more from well, this is what needs to go downstairs. This is what can go upstairs. We need to grow upstairs a little bit just to sort of line up structure and walls. And so you'll see that there's there's a pretty good amount of space up there for public safety side offices.
Speaking of, let's go ahead and take a look at the updates. Similarly to previous efforts, you'll see that we have isolated the city hall offices primarily towards the right-hand side of the project. The side. We have still our two main offices along the building front edge. We have some shared office workspace, kitchen and records area, as well as two private offices towards the north and a conference room for meeting with the public. Off of that, we have a central kind of leading landing area, almost active amenity because it does have a view over to this double height atrium stage that we're kind of bringing back into the project, which is really nice. And then off of that, we have to the west side of the project or to the left side is all of the police offices and kitchen functions and meeting functions on the second floor. We have one main private office for the police side that will be Police Chief, as well as some records and storage, but for the most part, we have a lot of open offers for right now, we're still showing six six desks in that space, which is better than we had before. Those desks are actually pretty, pretty large, so they have capability to have more people in there. If we do look at the Space Needs Report, six staff was definitely more than sufficient.
But one of the things we had removed previously, and I think Chief was willing to do this to get to our square footage that would need to be for the lower budget previously, was we had removed, you know, much area for actual office, like countertop, staple and storage and that kind of stuff. We have minimal amount of storage. We'd have essentially removed any type of kitchenette on the public safety before. So those things we've added back in since we have that room. And what we're trying to do really is on that west side of the public safety, it's a very open space. You'll see it when we get to use the interior, but it's, so it could be a very flexible space in the future. So we're not proposing a lot of building walls. We have we have a plumbing wall for the kitchens, for the kitchenette, and that there's still a question on whether that moves, but we're trying to keep that very open so that it can be flexible. So it needs to change in a few years. It could happen very easily.
Are you showing the kitchenette? Okay, so kitchenette would be, see towards the north side of this public safety wing, there's supposed to be like a large table. Yep, exactly. And it's hard to see my face, I realize that. But directly adjacent to that, we have sort of a partial like wall that provides that space. We have a kitchenette on that, on that sort of kitchen side of the wall. On the opposite side, we have space for printing and storage that's used directly by the office. And you'll see it, you'll see it really clearly when we show you guys this here.
So then that space, the kitchenette space also doubles as their sort of meeting, group meeting space in the mornings, you know, they'll do roll call. That kind of stuff will all happen right now.
People also envision that space also doubling or adding another use for meeting with other agencies. So whether it's the sheriff's department or other cities and the junior briefings, that that would be, serve as a space as well.
That's what I was trying to figure out with kitchenette. Is that intended to service the entire building or just?
Just the, yeah, pardon. There's the office has their own as well. So there's really no shared program. We talked at one point about, we did discuss the opportunity of trying to share the conference room on the ground floor, but it was pretty clear that that even needs to be a confidential room, even though it's on the ground floor for the public safety side. So there's really no crossover between the civic center office and the public safety office. There's no crossover.
The only kitchen for the, for the city hall building is on the first floor.
No, I think Mark's going to explain that office. There's one upstairs as well.
Yeah, I'll jump into that in a minute, but I wanted to highlight just a couple of things about the public safety wing, just quickly. One was the desire for, from Chief Martinez, to be able to see clear views in the downtown. Based on our previous model, we had a single-story ground floor. We put the chief's office and and the general offices directly on Main Street. But still, we're going to get single stories. We have limited views. By placing offices actually on the second floor, having now windows lining this side of the project, on the west side of the project, you get unobstructed views in the downtown, which was really helpful from a previous perspective to be able to see kind of activity. But to answer your question for kitchenette, let's see.
Yeah, I see it now.
Yeah, there's also a kitchen area, sort of a dining kitchen area, kind of linking that to the atriums. So they have their own, and then we also have a public kitchen on the ground floor adjacent to connected to your community. So there are very, there are three distinct spaces to those.
So one of the big changes from sort of, not necessarily how the second floor works or anything, but in the previous designs, the stair that connected the ground floor to the second floor, well, first there was one stair, it's a small enough second floor, then it only needed one stair. So when we moved large to the second floor, there's a second stair needed for exiting. And then the main stair, and we had still, this is one of the things that came out of the conversations over the last few weeks. Previously, that stair was sort of an open stair, so people would use it to go upstairs and the lobby was open. And it was a, it wasn't a fully enclosed stair, so it was unlockable. You could, if people were public, were in there during the weekend for a community event, they could wander up there. So Christie and Shannon made it pretty clear that they really want to see that second stair or what's called stair two, but it would be the main stair, would be fully enclosed, so it is lockable. And so we've done that, we've filled that in. So when the community room has an activity on the weekend, there's no access upstairs. So the stair, the exit stair from the second floor is only accessible from inside the office and it goes directly outside and there's no access actually to the ground floor. The stair two, which is the sort of main exit stair, which serves both the city hall office and the public safety, safety office, is lockable. So the only access it would have would be if there was somebody on the second floor, staff, they can get in there for exit and get out, but the ground floor would be locked from the corridor side. You'd be able to get, if you're in the stairwell, you can get out, there will be kind of hardware that will light up that door, but it would be locked from the corridor side and for the pre-function side. So there's no, you know, access in and out. The elevator can be locked down, you know, can only have access at certain times. And then the restroom that's public on the second floor is not required for the community. So we're handling all of restroom requirements for the community room downstairs. So there's no, there's really no need to go upstairs or need to second floor. On the weekend when there's a public event. So it really provides great security for that second floor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, I think it's true to hear what you're saying. It's taking a little bit of time. So with staircases, stair two is going to be private for big ladies, staff, yeah?
Yeah, during the day, during the day, it could be unlocked where if public came in and needed to go upstairs to the staff, they can get into that stairs immediately. They don't have to use the elevator. But then during, when you want to lock it down, you can lock it down because you don't need to access that.
But in the case of an emergency and it is locked down, there is still emergency anywhere else.
Yeah, there's hardware on the door that basically doesn't lock.
Now, what about any emergency services, people coming in that need to get in there?
They would have that, they would have access. So yeah, there's typically, which is pretty common, there's lock boxes at a, at a building that has basically a master key so that fire department comes, there's always locked doors. They need to get that. They can get into that box and then they have access to.
Oh, is the same thing that is better when?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good question. Yep, very good question.
So stair one is accessible from the outside of the building, right?
Well, the reality is it wouldn't have, well, what we envisioned is it wouldn't have any hardware on the outside where you could actually go with it. So it's really just an exit stair that's required from the office down to get outside. So it doesn't have to go back inside. Which is helpful because then we don't have to have a hallway to it from on the ground floor and take up extra space. So it goes directly outside.
But eventually, there's an emergency access out there.
Exactly.
And stair two, which unfortunately, I'm unable to contact. apologies there. Stair two would actually, this one here is stair one. Does, that's the door lobby, so like, some primary meeting stairs, that's the fourth, whole public.
And it's ready to drop in the reception building. So that door into the stairs, so anybody going up the stairs is going to be seen of reception building.
And then we are still maintaining clear circulation to this building by this vertical kind of pre-function bar that really separates the two main. Previously, that was something that was desired to create kind of a clear line of sight to the the north parking lot and then now along to Main Street and over to the market. From the exterior, you'll notice, we'll get into that presentation, we'll be able to read that, it's up the front entry as well. This is really exemplified on the second floor by having an open space that actually both of these wings are able to look into in double height kind of open future space.
Can you go back to the ground floor too? Because one of the, I just want to make clear, the restroom that is behind the elevator. It's a public restroom, but it's public in a way that it's, it's serving the community room because the community room, based on its size and its occupancy, is required to have three bathrooms. It's, in in reality, will be primarily a bathroom that's serving council members and the billing staff. So billing staff really want and needs their their own restroom and not a public restroom. So it would have, say, a keypad on the door and everybody billing and every council would know the code. And so council can go out quickly, use that restroom, billing can use that during the day. But it's not, we, we had discussions about creating another bathroom, but it seemed, to be honest, just a little bit wasteful and taking up a lot of space that we don't, didn't have to be able to provide a whole third one for the community room. That wouldn't be, since it's up there, isn't necessarily within that sort of block area of the first room of the community, first base of community room and the lobby. So but it seemed like a really good approach that then we'd be able to stack private restroom upstairs for the offices as well. So we're stacking you know, in all attempts, trying to stack the bathrooms, at least the ones on the second floor, about bathrooms that are on the first floor. So we're simplifying.
But what it amounts to is that if we were doing an event that utilized the entire community room, you would have three bathrooms, basically, or the whole two
Yeah, yeah. In reality, that's also, I think what we talked about is if you're using the full community room, the second floor bathroom could be accessed because there'll be enough security there that somebody, that that stair could be available to that up to the mezzanine and the elevator to that one restroom that's also public upstairs.
We wouldn't be using the full community room theoretically unless it was a workday or something where we had everything staffed and all of it.
Right. Or if it was a large enough event, it's not like there would be staff there.
Yeah.
Even if it wasn't there to work there.
That's some, some situation, there would be staff there.
Yeah.
And the idea that the community room for many private events or just community events would just be using somehow or another to be blocked off and it's.
Yep. Yeah. The community room, as we're showing it in that plan, has 160. The actual capacity though, occupancy wise, is 280, 200, how much? It's, I think it's 243 or so. If it was standing room only, like no chairs. We're playing chairs out with seven, or excuse me, seven community required, seven tables like this will allow six foot of spacing and then an additional four tables in the back for staff, you're getting 106. So you can add to that if you take, say, those four tables in the back for staff weren't there, there's a whole nother row of seating that could go in, so.
So maximum capacity is 280?
243, I think is standing room only. Your room, a typical room like that's going to have, like, if you have a sign here, this is current maximum, 324, you're going to have a sign in there that says 240. Now, how many times you have 243 in there is probably going to be fairly, fairly.
I was trying to, so are the, the little pieces that you've got in here, the actual city seating capacity?
Yeah, those are chairs laid out, you know, to, as you would in a typical space like that, right, to use each other.
We realized that this room won't have the chairs that have all the time, so we have those storage utilities located just on that tray door. Any other comments, questions on these kind of floor plans? Any other comments, questions on these uh kind of floor plans?
If you have utility door, you draft, what does the fire?
There's a, um, fire, the fire system, the sprinkler system will require a pump and the water comes in and there's a pump, so that's gonna be probably in a separate room within that, we haven't broken out all of those spaces within that room because we're just, yeah.
Yeah, mechanical, like, I mean, there's, there's a lot, a lot of utilities that are licensed.
I think our plan in the past was putting the generator in the back of the building, so I think that's still a plan. Um, so that room will be electrical panels. I think we talked about any, um, hopefully hot water usage is fairly minimal, so like kitchenette will probably have like an under, under sink instant hot water tank there. The showers would have, you know, there's enough height there in that space that ideally we can get the, those water heater tanks for those in that in the locker room um in ceiling. And then, um, so there wouldn't be big water heater in that room, so it's mostly electrical panels, fire pump. And then we talked for trash inside the building, it'll probably be primarily the roller carts. So we have a vision to where to read those, we cycle on trash, maybe two years cycle. Clean, cleaning crew comes once a week, brings the trash down there, and somebody then brings it out to the dumpster. So we need to get into some of the detail about how much goes into that room, which is always, once we get our consultants on board, uh back on board, not once we have a plan set, they're gonna tell us this is how much room I need for the electrical panels, and then we're gonna make sure it is. So that's our next step.
But I guess the one thing I would ask is, is with this kitchen and community room, we've got the access for the community room to bat. But if we're, if there were an event going on on a weekend or something, we would normally use a press down on hand. Is there a locked door on that kitchen so that if people are using the community room and they're using the kitchen, they can't just wander on into utility storage and stuff like that?
Yeah, I think that that, yeah, we can definitely have, have that as a locked door. I think it would be, I don't think you really want people going from the kitchen utilities unless there's like a delivery. So the only, that's the only reason that door is there, to be honest, is so that you have deliveries to the kitchen, you don't necessarily have to go through that. We can get rid of that door and go through the community room, but um.
Well, you need some place to dump trash and stuff like that.
Yeah.
What, what concerned me was that we're, we're trying to be real careful that on the weekend, if there's a weekend event or something that people are, don't have access to the rest of the building.
It could be locked. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can either have follow-up access on all those doors or you can, I, we haven't gotten to that until, there is a lot of follow-up access that will be provided. So whether it's on every door or we got keys on some, but that one would have to be locked from utility side.
Yeah, access control is something certainly that we can, we will work through in detail as we get further down the line, knowing the stores. Key access or follow-up access, et cetera.
You've just, we've gone through this with so much of it, I think that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good, that's a great point. And, and typically those, um, so if we go to a movable wall system, like a, you know, partition, it's typically got a acoustical sort of material on it, those have doors built into them, so we would provide a door so that, you know, you can get into those other community rooms to get to the kitchen, but um you know, to be honest, I had thoughts, like that's a really good point. If somebody's just using the front room about access to the kitchen, I think we can provide it. Now, if we break that into three rooms, each one of them's not gonna have access to the kitchen, so that's a whole nother scenario, but I think if you have three separate small events and probably staff and the rest of the building's open, you can go up through the hallway.
Yeah.
Why on the police side, you have a restroom, shower, then ADA restroom, shower, what's your thinking? And not just have, say, just one ADA shower restroom? What's the need for two showers?
Yeah, we have to provide two, uh, well, uh, may not be now, uh, there is, and you know, the accessible showers obviously will be part, we have to provide that. Um, you know, based on the way that it's uh done, I, I think kind of going back to some of our earlier conversations on how we organize the locker room. Um, we knew that we needed two, that was a requirement of the department. Um, and you know, we also did provide the opportunity for, uh, you know, the space might just be one uh locker room that is open with a shower in it, and actually have people locked down for general purposes.
So yeah, we. There's probably a number goes, Chief asked for two. There's not a code thing, I think, because we have a locked door and it's a unisex shower. It could be used by either, I think Chief asked for two, and that's why there's one that's a little bit smaller, doesn't need fully ADA, and then one, they're both essentially unisex shower rooms, uh, but that was the request.
And within his locker room space as well, there's uh washer and dryer in there as well?
It's a locker, yeah. And so my, my understanding is that you got two, because if there is an event where somebody needs to take some clothes off or, you know, clean, and there's probably more than one potential officer involved, you want to be able to do that at the same time. Not have somebody else figure out waiting.
Exactly, so.
You know, for me, usually. Right from start, I think, I don't know.
If there's a biohazard material or something for an immediate leave.
Yeah.
Again, that was a request probably from uh Chief, based on their program.
That tends in a situation that they have, instead of taking your house closed on to watch.
Yeah, exactly, which is what they don't want to do, they don't want to take any biohazards away from the.
And then the other restroom on the ground floor is uh more for potential suspects or folks that are behind that security line. So it's a, that hall in there is not really even gonna be used by the police as far as staff. It's more for potential folks that are in there in the interview room or uh that have a very sort of clean shower or a clean restroom. Simple, uh, like no glass, no, you know, like almost like prison bathroom, I think is.
Or suspects or interviews, et cetera.
Yeah.
You talk about the one on the west side.
Yeah, the smaller, the smaller little one, yeah.
To help preserve some privacy too, so that they're not having to come into the public.
Yeah.
Their employees here.
Exactly. Exactly. And then the, the public safety side um does not have, the offices upstairs does not have their own restroom because we talked, with that stair that's right by the locker rooms, they can just go down and use those. Chief was good with that. We didn't need to provide that. And have another one.
Well, uh, there's no more comments, I think you can come to the period. I'm good. So as you guys remember, uh, hopefully, some of you are new to this discussion. Um, but our previous efforts were really to take some of the historic and local requests of Will Carlton and history of Carlton, Imperial and uh, you know, kind of group of our building forms that are sort of inherent to the civic Carlton. Um, we took a look, uh, you know, you obviously have the kind of gray, um, you have a train station, you have uh historic downtown as well as um, you know, sort of the, the new train station right now, just through by ten red sellers. All of these sort of forms together sort of create a certain dynamic, um, and really a context for us to work from. As we uh work through our previous efforts, we really kind of latched on to the sort of agricultural forms of of the granary buildings, we realized that those efforts um kind of has changed a little bit as we've gone through this process. Um, and our, our goal now is really to be taking a lot of excuse from downtown on Main Street uh with the primary brick facade and two-story frontages and uh the simple platform building designs. Um, you'll do that as we get into it, but we did want to include this slide because it's something that we showed previously. Um, so we're kind of all on the same page, is really, where are the precedents looking for, where are the sort of uh next door buildings that really kind of shape what this building wants? So we're gonna show you three options here. Um, they are all variations of a very similar building, uh, but as we get into the, as we're talking ourselves, I know that there's quite a few of this um on the exterior and how. Um, no, okay, I mean, I'll try to, sure. So we're gonna give you two views for each of the three options, one of them being from southwest, which is kind of the view uh from, from Main Street and downtown, and then another view of the southeast, which is uh directly out here. So one, uh, is probably the most simplistic version, it's a, it's a clean two-story frontage building. A very rhythmic window patterning, um, but also sort of identifies this, this banding on floor line here to sort of differentiate the first floor from the second floor, so it's not just a clean uh or just a simple brick facade. We also have a two-story height uh entry that really uh creates a punch to the building there, highlighting the building, building. Um, but above that are allowing for this continuous two-story front end to uh to extend along the entirety of the. Um, we do have some traditional brick details here that we want to point out, or we get into a little bit further after we look through these options, but you'll see that um, you know, all these brick headers, we have the, the brick windows turned vertical, really highlight traditional brick detail there. It's not necessary that we do that from a construction perspective, we say it's like, do that because it does tie into historical precedent we have out there.
Yeah, just about every building, every brick building down Main Street has similar way to do that. Now, they, they handle it in different ways. Or like they handle, just about every building handles their windows different and their corners different and everything, but that is one very common theme where there's a horizontal sort of either above the window, which is pretty common. From the way building, brick buildings used to be structured, that was a very structural element. Now, the way brick buildings are built is no, it's, it's really just turning the brick and if it's nothing structural, because all the structure is on the brick, um, but it still brings up the similar look, there's a lot of buildings.
And then in between the uh first door and second floor windows, we are creating a, a connection of that brick detail, brick detail that's in what header where the brick is actually from the vertical, create the connection between the, those two windows on the first and second floor and highlight that. Additionally, I, I mentioned repetitive windows for rhythmic uh thought. Um, that is very intentional in this design, something that we're gonna be talking about a little later too, is for what, what it would look like, kind of difference. Um, all these windows are the same height, same size, and they kind of follow a very simple pattern, this kind of gravitate around the door. So with that, we go to doors, southeast view. Um, in this view, you really can see how that, that rhythmic facade kind of continues around um all the way around the building. Uh, you can see directly in the community room, uh, you've got ample daylighting getting in there um as well as um, you know, views from, from the west side of the building. First off, these. Um, really, the, the main uh goal of this is this two-story entryway. We're sort of carving it back as we noticed in the floor plan, we actually have to set the, the doors back at knee deep because we can't really um have our doors exit onto the public right of way over the map that actually has to be set back. What that does is it creates an opportunity for us to highlight the two-story entry. Uh, we know we're gonna need some canopies uh on, on the project, but one of the primary canopies that we're throwing here is at the, it's the main entry, and we're highlighting that with field and then with uh the wood underside as well. Um, really creates a nice warm entry uh with the, with the warm wood sort of radiating down. And you can also see, you know, what we're showing you guys now, the, how that view of the entry system. Uh, but you can start to see some of the interior materials kind of radiating out as well. Uh, which is hard to see it directly, but we have some material that we can see.
So one of the things that comes into play, we'll get into the, so the way we have our presentation set up today, we're looking at two views of three options, then we go into more detail to talk about some specifics, but one of the specifics we'll talk about, you might have noticed, is the other view, but when we set up this rhythmic window pattern, we have locations and plan that don't want windows. A lot of the public safety side, restrooms on the ground floor, um, kitchen storage stairs on the, on the back, on the, on the uh on the public side. So that brings into question like, well, what do we do there, right? You have blank wall, how do you articulate it or not? So that's one of the things we'll, we'll talk about in one of the, some of the next slides that are, it's somewhat independent of big picture. So this is the first few slides are big picture mapping, and then we'll get into detail just so everybody knows this. If you're seeing it, we'll get to that very soon.
Great. Um, one of the things that we should note, that these windows right now, that they're, if they do provide an opportunity for audible windows, we can talk about that a little bit further and how that relates with the mechanical system that we get further down the line, but as of right now, we have that. Great. So we're gonna go ahead and go to option two. Option two, you'll see, um, really kind of changes some of the rhythmic uh window patterning on the facade, but really the primary difference here two, that you can see that verbal break that enters the building, really cuts the building down into two main volumes, which really highlight the public safety unit and the city hall. Um, it really brings the tension to that, that main entry as well as creates a little bit of a rework on the front facade. Whereas previously, you thought of that front facade on the, on the very upper part of the building, continued all the way along, created a nice continuity for the two-story frontage. This does create a little bit of beef that's there to sort of break the building down, almost looks like two smaller buildings connected by uh kind of a, a, a gasket. Um, and you'll see here kind of what Kevin was talking about, there's different ways of making a dress program along the front of the building where there are no windows. Um, right now, we're showing sort of a inset recess with the state of Carlton logo or whatnot, we'll discuss that a little bit further when we can. Uh, but the primary difference here, uh, like I noted, is that we see this main car that the building actually.
And one of the things that we, I know you've seen a version of this before in sketch form, I think back in August, maybe. Um, one of the differences that we were really trying to think about was what the materiality of that break becomes, and I think before, we had a lot of visions of it being wood with a wood storefront system and really a warmth and richness to that, which is wonderful, except that it's south facing and the maintenance of that could be quite a nightmare. Um, so we've gone to more of a metal storefront system, which is the most economical for our budget. Um, and then of the simple metal panels from above to kind of provide that gas state, as Mark called it, without trying to bring in, and, and allowing the wood to stay on the interior and sort of, as Mark said, shine through, and we have an image that you'll see later from the inside or outside in more. Um, but that's one of the, one of the things we're really trying to think about is what's the longevity and also what's the upfront cost of some of these things? Wood storefront system is gonna be more expensive than a typical wooden storefront system, um, quite a bit. And we had seen that in a previous design, we had a large wood door system outside of the pre-function community room. Um, we thought it, and the right thing that that was causing us to be over budget, and so we kind of got away from that immediately and said, okay, let's be very economical from the start, so we don't have those issues. That's our hope.
Two, uh, of option two, again, this kind of exemplifies how the building is broken down uh along that front facade. The, the rhythmic windows on this are very similar to option one, still with a single layer uh brick mental of uh the vertical brick kind of connecting the first and second floor windows, and that wraps along the sides uh from south side over to the inside.
The one thing I think that's different on these schemes from what you see in town, and I want to be hon, you know, I want to talk about that, is this is the, although we're trying to sort of capture the nature of those brick buildings and the, in the quality of the, the texture and the materiality, we've gone to a, but quite a different um proportional system to the windows, so these windows are now granted, they're still three and a half foot wide, which is a, basically a door width, um, so they're good width. Um, and they're tall, so that they bring in a lot of light into the spaces, so you're gonna get more light into it with a taller window than a wider, you're gonna just get more light into the ceiling and the floor, which reflects back into the space better. Um, but it also gives a bit more of a taller sort of civic building feel to it, rather than a, what was you know, typically maybe a residential upstairs and a retail ground floor and a, in a wider, shorter window, if that makes sense. So the proportions are, are a little different. I think that's what you would see if you looked at all the buildings uh through town, and there's a reason for that. Um, it's about light, bringing light in and about giving it a little bit more of a civic feel to the exterior. So it feels a little taller and a little less flat. That makes sense.
Great. Let's take a look at option three. Option three, we'll see that there's a can of the primary difference is going to be at the main entry. We have some similar rhythmic window patterning that's happening as the other two options. But this one really kind of takes that building entry and makes it a little bit more intimate by carrying that top layer, the second story facade all the way across, brings it out to the street. But the ground floor entry is still recessed and is really highlighted by where the canopy now kind of cards out the building. And it really only does that up and around though. This creates a very continuing front facade on the top floor. But also, like I mentioned, it creates sort of a little bit more of an intimate entry sequence than we had with the other options. But a big difference in this one, I'm going to go ahead and go to the second view because it's fully into your seat. Is you can see that we are changing the window sizing at the community room as it relates to the rest of the project. We're really identifying isolating sort of bigger, larger openings to really let active amount of daylight into that room as possible. And realistically, it actually combines with two windows above into the two ground floor, lacing really just brightens the space. It often really identifies from the exterior where the community room happens. Actually something that is, you know, used maybe just for weight finding purposes, somebody walks into the building or maybe going to understand or something. It almost says, you know, kind of the way that it was designed. The other thing that we are doing here is we're actually kind of resetting the walls at the community room. And you can see that here that they really step back about six inches. Again, that's kind of doing the same thing, sort of highlighting the programming of the building, which is the most public component. And really kind of emphasizing that from, from the exterior perspective, so that it's really identifying, clear what's happening in the building. The other thing that's really different about this one, which is maybe more subtle view, but all above the second floor windows, we are now doing a double height vertical step for the, for the mentals, for the brick mentals above the windows. But this does kind of create a little bit more of that classic character. And we just kind of want, we threw it on this design because we wanted to actually talk about it. It does create a little bit more verticality with the windows, which I think is probably the most beneficial in this option. Where you have the larger windows in the ground floor that helps to kind of side off of what's happening.
And if, I think we changed that option three when we liked, and then we didn't go back and change in option one and two. So we, so we didn't re-render it and do all that. But it's something that very easily goes into all schemes. Provide the better proportion, I think, of top of the line.
So let's go to a quick summary here of the three options. Option one is kind of a two-story frontage. You have that double height carved entry space and a very completely rhythmic window pattern along that. Option two, ours that made it through all the way up, it's two distinct volumes, kind of separating the public safety main and the city hallway, very explicitly from the exterior of the building and sort of breaking them down. Option three really creates the most minimal front entry experience, a little bit more intimate than the option two, which is very carved out and open. Simple height reset there at the building entry. It creates a different window patterning along the interior of space with much more daylight getting in. And sort of really highlight that program instead of the building exterior. And then also changes the, some of the brick detailing. But really the, sort of the three options that we're looking at here, that are all variations of very similar design. And we want to just kind of get your thoughts, what are your thoughts on this? Is there something that you like about one that you really don't like about another or kind of vice versa to the other? Really, we'll just open it up. Was that?
The class, did you have any, is it similar?
I don't think there's dramatic differences between any of them, yeah. I mean, they're all the same materials, the windows are very similar, there's the same amount of skin. Nothing I would, I would hang my hat on this day, one a lot cheaper than the other.
I guess a question I would have with light on everything, this whole design on top of the roof, that kind of make it look more like downtown corner stain. Yeah, we kept it, one, we kept it really simple. We can certainly add a layer underneath the top carpet to sort of create that sort of vertical banding. We decided that we didn't, to keep it sort of minimal, simplistic in this design. But there's certainly options that we can take or look at a little further.
And one of the things that we try to be careful with in current brick construction is the trickier you get with bricks, the more expensive it is, right?
I get that.
Yeah, so I think we usually start like, okay, no carpet. And part of this, because we tend to gravitate towards that. And carpet isn't necessarily doing as much now as I think it used to, but we can definitely look at options for that without trying to, you know, jack the cost of.
Try and also there's something out there that aren't brick that we actually highlight the edge of the building on top of it. Well, sure, it would be a high cost.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I believe it's actually potentially a requirement of downtown moving totally create that point by, if not for this site, because it's still railroad. But we can certainly take a little bit.
How about the windows, option three, but are we concerned about safety while?
The lower.
The lower with all the windows?
Option three.
Are we concerned about safety with people looking in and now?
I mean, that's a great question. Is the, the public face, right? And it is the community, so that may be a more philosophical question on how that space wants to represent it. I think how the health council and how they all feel about that, is it being pretty open or do we want to, like you're saying, is there, is there any concerns?
Are there types of glass? Are there different things that can be done on glass that just add or?
Well, I think when we talk about, when we were talking about safety, there's the, there's the physical safety of it. Can we put bulletproof glass in the windows? Yes. Expensive, yes, right? Other than that, you know, films and stuff will reduce visibility in, but I don't know if that's really what you want on the background for. So, and then if it's more about perception of safety when you're inside and you're not as open to the exterior, then obviously less window will do that. You know, you, there's enough window that somebody really wanted to break a window and get in, they're going to get in whether the window is three days wide or one. Because you can, as far as like driveability, you know, and car hitting that corner, I don't think that the bigger window is going to, you know, do much different either. You still have the brick and you have a sill. There's probably a little bit more, there goes, you know, a safety to one and two, we cover that. But I think that's maybe somewhat on here.
Something else to consider as well, we would, you know, eventually it's much more conventional, we would be showing some sort of roller shades or some capability for that to build at some point. And, you know, after hours, you can certainly just go ahead and roll those down. And they have different layers and you can have complete blackout shades, you can have shades that are one percent or two percent light. Sure, you guys have put shades in your house. And there's, you know, in certain ways that we can certainly make it appear a little bit more bright, if needed, especially if you're doing a smaller setting. And you use one of those kind of divider walls and you make a smaller space, you could just kind of use the shade to really create a, quite a bit more in this environment, even with the larger windows.
I think the one on the option three, I think one of the intents too is that that, to be honest, mimics, not mimics, relates to the ground floor of some of the brick buildings in Tavmar, where that were retail spaces that had more of a wider blast. Not a, they didn't have necessarily the same windows and sub-surfaces down. And so that was, that was the intent of that. Now, I don't, with that said, I don't think one and two are bad because they do, because I think that they're still very big and they create a presence. But that was the other intent of option three.
I like the part where you're definitely talking more like coming to that state. So one question I have, and I'm curious about which thing is the fact that the cheaper the price.
Stuff, it doesn't make it all the same all the way around.
Oh, never, and I'm not changing, but is it possible to do option two entry with option three?
Oh, yeah, of course, absolutely.
There's a lot of these things are, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I agree. I like the car.
Yeah.
The option two. I had the same concerns about the windows of like, you know, this is a community room too. So somebody's running it out for like a yoga class, you know, we, we don't want the public to be able to just sit there and stare at one of them, you know, so. I have no issues, you know, when we're holding, how somebody needs to be transparent, but you know, and I know there's ways to.
I guess what I was thinking, the one thing I was thinking about with the downtown buildings is that most of them that have the glass in front also have the bricks coming up, what about three feet? And so I was trying to figure out if that's what you were going to do on the windows or for the windows.
Yeah, we have it at, I think we have it at about two. I mean, that's, that's flexible as far as where it goes. I think a lot of those, well, some of them that had wood storefront go, the wood goes all the way down and the brick doesn't even touch the ground. And some, you know, I don't know if there's a consistency to that.
There's not.
Yeah, but we have brick and we can look at where that is, if we want it to be a little higher, we can.
Well, we were talking about a little bit of privacy for the community room. And I was thinking, just bringing that brick up just a little bit higher.
I think you want to be careful that when you're sitting, it's not here, you know, but you're still seeing out. You do that for sure. And then actually, I mean, yeah, we can do that at the ground floor, it's not really going to affect anything else.
Mine is like the, the building that the horse ride.
Okay.
Looking at this side as well, you could probably achieve some of your privacy vegetation and different types of plants.
On the, on the side, on the front, you're kind of right now. And depending on that width, you can probably do some pots. And that was, I guess that was the other thing I keep going back to is we've, we've been talking about a bias for a green building. So I'm not sure.
So, yeah, we're going to get a big flat roof with a little bit of, we have the option for solar panels up there.
Is that included in the cost of the building? Is that included in the company design? I mean, currently on the last round, I think we didn't have that included in the building. We can certainly include it, we don't have a pricing package.
The, the energy code has changed a little bit since the last time, the last building design. So there, what the energy code now requires, I think, is buildings to be solar ready. So you're putting in a lot of infrastructure for the solar panels regardless of whether you put panels or not. You need to make sure you structure the building to support the panels. But at that point, panels can go on now or can go on later when you get, you know, if you get a grant form or if you get them plugged in later. So that it's not a, they need to go on now, you're going to put the, the infrastructure in for them regardless. There's conversations that we had about, do we provide batteries to store the power? Which is, I think there's two sides to that debate. And some people say yes, except that batteries don't last very long and there's, there's problems with them and they take up a lot of space. Some people say don't put them in because they're going to be wasteful by the time, you know, in 10 years, they're going to be obsolete and you're going to replace them. And you can just essentially use that power and then send it back to the grid. You get credits typically for that, which is more common these days than the battery storage. So there's some conversations, I think, that we had about how we handle that. But we're going to be providing solar ready, the roof's going to be structured for us regardless. Whether it was in the last budget or not, it's going to need to be entered into our next budget.
I got a question on how the community can, but we'll get to that and then actually for you guys here. Because of school district, but are we aboard, is there any way, or is there any thought on or? And I don't know, that'd be on the building or in the city, I don't know for some.
I think it's for a sign kind of that, it's a lot of.
Well, I know, but we need to change that. Are we, are we what?
A reader board.
A reader board.
Like you're talking reader board.
It's important our community members want it.
Yeah, no, 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 that's not our thing.
What would the, what is a reader board, like what do you want a reader board to display?
Just to identify things that are going on in the community, like school districts. The school district came to the city and talked to them a couple of years ago. At that time, they said, well, let's just wait until we build a new building and see if we can incorporate something. And, and, and I don't know that quote is allows it right now, but they need something in the future.
So your three, three options, yeah, there's. For me, they're a little square.
Little square.
Little huge square. I would like to see like, if you did some kind of facade across the top of the building, there's more goes in with some of the older buildings in town. Radius windows on top and with a different, a different color brick radius in that, those areas. A brick, some kind of a ledger on the window, the bottom sill, the sill, kind of kind of a brick token there. And as Linda mentioned about, you know, maybe raising the bottom when it goes up a little bit more. Could be kind of interesting to see what, you know, what that would look like. The inset entryway in option two, I think that definitely breaks it up, which is nice. The bigger windows in three, yeah, you're going to get more lighting and all of that type. And there's so many, I mean, you can tempt those windows, there's so many coverings that, you know, I mean, the concern of, you know, a yoga class, people are there. I mean, that all will be changed, this window cover. I mean, that portion of the building there looks nice, maybe with that option two entrance on option three setback. Some kind of facade across the top of the building is radiant, different color brick.
So I, I think that, I'm sorry, I don't need to cut you off for ease. I want to talk about the radius windows because I think that that's a great topic to talk about. We can draw radius windows, no problem, right? I think the problem is the cost, the budget we have and the structure we need to make radius in the current way we build brick buildings. Is can be done, yes, whether we can, we have a lot of windows on this thing, but now with the size of the windows and bigger building. I'm very, I'd be very concerned that the cost to do the radius, and I don't know what that is, so I can't give you number as part of the percentage or anything. I'd be very concerned about that. The cost to do that is going to increase our brick cost pretty dramatically. So I think we can draw that, we can talk to folks and we can talk to brick people about the realities of that these days and what they think. Like if we're doing, we could simply say, hey, we got a brick, there's a brick that, that's a window. And, you know, maybe there's a percentage they give us, but I guess I want to keep, I don't want to close our mind to not being able to do that. Because the cost to camp, we're going to need to go away from it. So we can show both maybe and then.
And with that, say then maybe, other than a brick radius, you do some kind of a steel structure radius.
Well, I think that that's the, well, I think that the brick, the steel is part of the cost actually. Because the way bricks essentially is built now, you're going to put a steel hell lintel that's going to sit at the bottom of whatever brick it's, the brick sits on, right? And then that, that lintel is supporting the brick. So suddenly you have a curve, then you've got a curve of steel lintel.
Right, so we build all of that stuff out of some kind of steel structure that inserts in there and you, and then you don't cover it with brick.
Well, we can do it, but the cost of steel, it's cheaper than bricks we stayed in to do it. So, I mean, we can look at that, I don't think that that reflects any of the buildings downtown, that sort of separate thing about the window. I, I think there's only one, I only saw, I guess, one building that actually had a curve. I saw a lot of buildings that had a, a flat window heading with more of the turn brick, which is what we were trying to like, okay, here's an economical way to kind of bring in that header without trying to curve it. I just don't, I want to be honest here, right? Like we're having a work session, I'm not going to, and I'm not saying this because about any, any other reason of being very concerned that the cost is going to be too high to do that. Now, we can look more into it, come back with as much information as we can get. But I think that's my, you know, everything else, the, the cornice, the lintel, all things that I think are great and things we talked about and haven't gotten in there and raising the bottom sill, I think are all great ideas. I'm very concerned about it. If we gave our heart set on a curb header. If we're, if we gave our heart set on a curb header and, uh, and we can't do it and we can't afford it.
And where people go. I think that, um, I'm, I'm having a little bit of difficulty just because everything looks so sharp and so. You know, really, but I keep reminding myself that these are sketches.
Yeah, yeah.
And that when you get the actual brick up there, you're certain those, those sharp angles are going to be slightly soft.
Yeah.
Quite as. As sharp as they are. So that's the hard thing I, I keep reminding myself. The other thing is I think when we started, it'd be a very original sketch. I mean, a drawing of what. You know, the students brought in. There was a lot of like the barrel entry and all of that stuff that it still. At least for me, still kind of sticks in my mind. And so I'm having to. Overcome that a little bit in terms of that. Probably economically, those kinds of features are just not.
Barrel vault is gonna happen. Yeah, I think.
Not within our budget.
Yeah, I think to me, although like, I mean. I was never, I'll be honest, I was never fanning the barrel vault, right? But I really liked the space. And it's understanding like the proportions of that and the scale of that, of what's the material and that is what I think back to, to that. And then. I think you'll start seeing when we get some interiors in a little bit and that we're trying to still mimic your, I keep using this word mimic. I don't mean to say that, but. Um, we're still trying to represent that same feel, but in a way that's realistic to the budget that we have and the structure that, that we're gonna have. Um, and as soon as we start curving blue lamps or curving structure or roof numbers and. The cost is go and we can, we, you know, I'm just, I want to be careful that we don't go down the path and then suddenly we're at. Six million dollars and I'm like, well, what did we cut? Like we gotta take this thing back. This is gonna affect our schedule and do all that. So I want to be honest with that. Cost, the five million is, it's great that went up with the bigger building, but it's not so much so that we, you know, I think we're gonna afford a lot of tricky structure.
Gary, how are you feeling about this?
I'm okay with it. There's just a lot of things I'm thinking of. Like maybe the sidewalk side of the building that. Reset the third floor and take a metal on it and go along the whole street side, the whole side. Have a wood underneath, so it's not gonna get leaked by the sun for real. So it kind of brings that work feel into it a little bit. Same advantages, it looks like it's go the normal managers anyway.
Yeah.
So that carry on into the building, I don't think, is what we're doing.
You're thinking though of more of a whole canopy, a full white.
It's sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we do have, um. Weather protection guidelines that are part of, um, so I think we've got to get into, you know, we're, we're still, I realize that these are pretty basic renderings that we're looking at right now. Uh, but we are still kind of at the beginning stage and that's it. I'll just, yeah.
And there was, I know in the past we had more, we had much more sort of individual canopies that every, no, correct? Um, which I think, you know, part of like, it's great because it shades the south facing windows. Uh, it definitely changes the. The scale of the building, you know, and the deal with that, like two story, specific nature of building too, so.
I don't know cost wise, you know, like what it is to reset that third floor and, um, I know it's still a five mill scale or something, but you gotta do some.
If you resets the second floor? Yeah, I mean, we have a wood structure inside, so yeah, so the problem becomes like you're stacking. You're trying to stack glue lamps and it's, should you do that here? Um, now depending on how we. Yeah, I think we just need to talk. I think it's, it becomes harder on one side than the other, yeah, because of the way those glue lamps are probably running. Um. But, um, yeah, a bit of a struggle, I think, uh, just to not stack that second floor structure. But.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah.
Your point about brick and texture, reality, we have a couple of samples here. The one, um, that's. On, that's right now is the one that we had proposed for the previous round. Um, you can see there's a lot of variation in the texture. We're still looking for that. Um, however, we think that the color itself, um, while it was previously really liked by some members of the staff. We realized that we will probably want to go a little bit more towards, uh, warmer, uh, kind of downtown brick colors rather than this. We got a little white undercomp, which is. You know, something that was cool and we liked about it previously, you know, we're by no means dead on any sort of particular vertical color. But we wanted to bring these samples to show you the differences in texture and build and sort of how the, how the building can look. Exterior.
Yeah.
And we're talking whole brick, not laminate. Yeah, 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 exactly. Yeah, whole brick. Uh, whole brick veneer, which means it's gonna be, uh, we have our main wall assembly that will structure the building. We have some exterior insulation, uh, air gap, and then we have whole brick sample. Um, you know, there is the capability like you're talking about to do what we call thin brick, which is essentially, it's almost like a brick tile, pretty much just like this. It's attached to a backboard, which, oh no, that, sorry, that's good. That's actually a product I'll bring here. Uh, yeah, so in, in your certain way you can do that, but we don't typically like to do, uh. Thin brick veneer, even though sometimes it can be easier to do in certain applications. You know, our preference is always go with a brick veneer if possible. Um, the, the costs, you know, differences between them can be very similar because of. You know, like backboard, all the ground, I mean, all of that.
Yeah.
Kind of needs to always come with the cost. So we just let, I mean, originally we like having the, we're on the full, they, you know, side of the.
Perhaps we might mix them, like with some of the detailing we're talking about, like if you want to take. Say the, the sort of vertical brick that's at the, the, between the windows and recess it, we might just simply do that with. Going from a full brick to a thin brick and, and you're keeping all that plain behind it. And I think, you know. The simplicity should really happen within the waterproofing layer behind the brick, right? So there's again, there's brick and then there's a gap. Between the, the brick and the back of it and your sheeting and your waterproofing. Your waterproofing can stay simple and flat, which I think you understand it's gonna be. But where you're gonna limit your issues with, with any water penetration. Keep that simple. And then you can do some things with the brick itself, how, whether you turn it 90 degrees. Whether you get a little, push it out a little bit and get some depth, or whether you go to a thin brick in some locations just to get some depth variation. That's where you can start getting some of what some of the old buildings do with, with the brick coursing, um, with, at a pretty reasonable cost. Now. Sometimes brick guys don't want to do the thin brick and the tile guys do the thin brick and not the brick guys. And, um, so it somewhat depends on who's doing it as well. Um, well, we typically end up using a company called Mutual Materials. That's local. Uh, they're local to Portland or the Portland area. I don't know, to be honest, it's very, that like. Well, and so they, and they make all their bricks here, so in, in Oregon, yeah. Um, and to be honest, every time. Anytime we look at a record that's not from mutual materials, it comes back because they're the best cost and they're local. So that's great. Um, so typical. And they have a variety of sizes and textures and, um, so we need to look, you know, we had, we had some that we were looking at. There's a whole lot of different colors and. Some will have more variation like that one has got sort of a, sort of.
Some rustic texture.
Okay, I'd say, yeah. Yeah, so I think it depends on how they're fired and, and the colors again, but some are very monotone. So like. If you think of like a whole red schoolhouse, you know, it's very sort of smooth bricks, same color. There's like no variation between one brick to another. And that's a very different look than a brick like that that's gonna have different colorings on different bricks. And it's gonna have a bit more of a texture pattern and it's, you know, typically looks like it's a little bit, maybe a little bit older and isn't so flat and modern. Um, so there's a lot, I think, to be looked at with the bricks and also availability. Bricks changed. It's been a year and a half, two years. You gotta make sure what mutual is making, like everybody, they've had issues with staff and, and, um, you know, availability. So we have, we need to see what they're, what they truly have. In their minds again, but, uh, that's the best company that we've always found to work with.
What we'll do is, you know, when we, we have another, uh, work session, we can bring, uh, that'd be, uh, options to kind of work here. Um, and we, you know, we'll, we'll try to hone it down so it's not overwhelming. This is a lot.
Um, but.
Exactly. Um, but yeah, there, there, there's a lot of options. But with this discussion about brick, I kind of wanted to go into some of the more textual details. And sort of how we're dealing with some of these area walls with the facade where we don't have windows, uh, on the ground floor. How would we sort of. Make the building still look good? Uh, how do we, uh, make it look textual? How does it sort of, uh, not just look like a blank facade on the ground floor? Um, so if you guys are okay, you mind if we go ahead and do that? But I think we have really great feedback on that. I think we would like to do that, refine, uh, refine our interior designs. Okay. So we're gonna start looking at the material transitions and how, uh, the brick really kind of plays into textural differences on, on the side. Um, this upper left image here really is a great example of how the brick, uh, changing in from horizontal to vertical really creates differentiation. Along with the thought, you don't necessarily have any change in depth, but because of the brick is rotating in plane, you're actually seeing that really. Take how the building was this far. Um, in, in this particular instance, this is very similar to what we're showing on the exterior facade right now where. Apple four lines and we turn, uh, the brick vertically. I like that level change, that differentiation between the first one and the second four. Um, and you don't even need to do anything, uh, with the instead of more including the brick, it will be a combo that really does it just based on.
The vertical and horizontal are all the same.
Yeah, indeed. Yeah, there are, there are places where it's not. And I think you've got an example of, uh. What I could only assume was at one point the car from fire department, which is C and something restaurant now.
Is it?
Yes, yes. Um, and it has, you know, what you were talking about, which is a different colored brick.
It changes, it turns it vertical and it goes to more of a yellow brick versus a red brick, right? And so you get. You get more striking potential with that. I think it's something to look at, um, with, with what we're doing to maybe call with more attention to that detailing at the windows. Um, they have a very, it, it goes across the whole facade, right? So it's not just at the windows. So it's very stripy, but. I think that there's a potential of, of doing some, some color shifts as well. So.
Core grad building.
Yeah.
Different. Different color at the windows and then even love that.
Uh, this, this second image here really shows that a similar ending occurring of a window header here. It really carries across, uh, that. It's a creative creation, but it also has a brick bill, uh, turns to brick, well, uh, kind of created highlight there at the windows. So. Um, the rest of these images along the top are showing textural differences. And the way they do that is one by either offsetting the location of the brick along that. Thought or turning the brick to the 90 degrees, which you will see kind of more so in some of these where you get deeper style line on that. Um, I know that we had shown previously some, some options of that on, on the interior building, which we'll look over for a minute. Um, and, and we are still hoping to utilize some of this to really kind of break out the facade. Um, the bottom left image shows, you know, how do we, uh, instead of just having a blank facade of the building, is there a way that we can sort of reset that? Uh, the brick a little bit to create, you know, the form of where a window, uh, could have been or should have been. Um, but it's really just, it's still through the wiring, you know, like facade on the interior, but really creating that, that similar rhythm experience on the interior of the brick. Uh, but having all the interior materials. Um, this, this kind of second to the last bridge here on the bottom really shows a textural transition between a very heavily textured ground floor with bricks or. You know, kind of a different plane and then sort of fades up into a building. Um, and then the last image as well is some more, uh, concepts of the top ones where it shows, uh, really a textural change in the brick. To kind of highlight that sort of module. So the first, um, location that we really wanted to talk about, um, was towards the back of the building. Um, this would be the northeast corner of the building as you're transitioning over into the public portion of the parking lot. Um, right now, this is where it's air, right? So there's no, we, we really don't have an opportunity for those there. Yeah, so this is an option about resetting the facade, maybe inserting the metal panel there, uh, to sort of create the illusion of like. Continuing that window pattern around the building, but instead of having windows there, because we can't put another period. Um, a second option, which is kind of follow up from you guys from the middle of the pre design. It's really getting rid of the windows there that incorporate textural elements. Um, and what you end up with is if you don't have a big blank facade brick, because that would feel very lossy and very, very almost weightless materials. And incorporating this textural material which previously was, was developed out of, you know, uh. Material representation of the Doug Verstappen, right? All the surrounding, uh, landscape around here, you can see that. You know, the, the Doug Verstappen is really reaching out and kind of creating this, this sort of, um, uh, background and backdrop to the building. And then sort of kind of reclass that in a way that sort of abstract, um, creating these vertical lines from, from, uh, Doug Verstappen. Um, and really just kind of creates that textual expression for, uh, in between where you have these big points, uh, spacing between the windows.
The fact that these are shown on two, like this option two with a bigger opening and the entity is the other one with that one is sort of. Besides the point, I think we're just trying to focus on how to handle locations where there's no windows and whether we try to continue the pattern or whether we introduce a different. You know, way to handle those, that corner. And this is, this is the primary location that that happens, that's visible publicly. There's some other locations you'll see, you know, we haven't necessarily studied yet, but I think it was like, let's talk. About the approach here and then we can see how that gets handled in a couple of locations, but.
I thought this would be, leave it all flat. We carry that on, you know, with sidewalk and the, the crack and all that. The decorating, how the decoration was aligned and everything. I think we can take away, you'll have a whole big blank space. If you break it up with another.
Okay. Um, do you think that the awning would go all the way down to that east facade as well? Well, okay.
Because we have the sidewalk. I can say any of the, the sidewalk. But it could be nice to have a lot.
Well, so my concern about this side is more, there's a, there's a planting strip, I think that's required. Between the building and the sidewalk on the east side that's not on the south side. And so. We're gonna spend a lot of money for the canopy that's covering a lot of landscaping and a little bit of sidewalk. Cause we can still only extend a certain amount of the, and cost wise, we're not. I'm concerned that we're gonna be tough. We're gonna spend that money to cover half of the landscape strip and a little bit of sidewalk on east side. Between the building and the sidewalk, I think it's part of the shoot center.
Yeah, we've got some conflicting needs there though, because one of the things that I really. Don't like in a few places downtown is that we don't have awnings. People do walk a lot around here. And, um, particularly during the winter season. I mean, we still, you know, there's still plenty of use. So. It would be nice to have an awning. I understand the planning. Maybe there's some way we can reconcile those. But.
Things start being in a way, things like that, but trying to help the building.
Okay, yeah.
Get too far away and it's gotta have sunlight.
Well, yeah.
You know, if you blast.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about.
What's a typical awning you build? Say you put one of the brothers, brothers mail and finish they got two, three B?
Yeah, no, five to six. Four probably on the down, but five to six. And then just the deeper you go, there's more structure at that back side. And, and it's taller.
What I think I'd like to do is probably show some studies of, of different awning types. Uh, to you guys, uh, because there's different ways we utilize it. The way we showed it last time was a simple. The line that was really just kind of recessed and over. It really helps, um, stay within the language of the building. I think similarly with this, it probably helped. Um, previously we were taking sort of those, um. Uh, awnings and just sort of extending along where community room was because the extent of the northern part of the building, that was just kind of too extended to do that. Um, so we can certainly take a look at that as well, create a little. Um, but, but I do want to, I do want to hesitate creating the whole, you know, kind of triangular shaped awning fabric. I think we probably are not gonna do that on this building because it takes away from some aesthetic character too. I think.
Yeah. Right. I think, I think we need to, this, we need to review or investigate awnings and canopy get more, right? I think. You know, Mark's talking about what we've done before. I'll be honest, I don't think that that's a great solution to the awning because you're at these breaks when you're trying to walk under it, you're gonna. Constant sort of, so that trip edges. So we're gonna do it. It needs to probably be continuous. How it ties into the building character, I think is the big question. Um, and then the cost and the cost of, you know. Um, and then the cost and the cost of, you know, an extra 75 feet along facade might be, you know, there's a lot of streets that don't have canopies that people are walking down the side street name. So I think we just need to probably investigate the cost of that, um, along with the, you know, how it ties in.
So you kind of want to bring the discussion back to these two options of dealing with this corner. We can certainly look at, uh, you know, coursing and awning, including prayer as well. Uh, but if we go back up real quick, uh, this we're talking about, we think creating sort of material content and, or we can reset it and put, you know, the simple material in there as well. Um, but as of right now, this one's really dealing with the same, um, opening dimensions as the window and the same patterning as the window, but really just resetting it in a way to sort of influence what the window pattern is doing. And the second option is really changing the, uh, uh, strategy to, to go towards more, uh, attractive brick approach. Uh, as opposed to just having it be a, uh, we can certainly also show this as a blank side as well. I don't think we have that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Stop clearing the screen real quick, this guy actually has the sketch up on it this time or.
So there's the, there it is without, without any brick. Um, and I do think, I do agree, like if there's a different cornice, that's something, um, I'm concerned. I'm, I guess I'd be concerned just totally removing something, but is the concern the cost spent on something like that that we don't really need to, or? Is that what? Yeah, or like on the two options that were shown, you said, well, let's just remove it all and just show, just do the cornice and we don't need it.
I like that right there.
Oh, you do?
Cause it's, it's, you know, more, yeah, you have a window in the middle of it.
Yeah, okay. There are places like, like here, right, where we have a door coming out of the stair.
One light panel. But it does carry on the whole.
What is that, what is in that panel that's a choice?
Uh, that's probably would end up being the metal panel that would be similar to what's happening at the entry. So then I'll flip around real quick, cause there's a, we'll probably show a different image of this later, but we have this, I think our, our biggest concern, to be honest, we showed it, we're looking at about that other corner, and I think that's the most public side. And, and this is the police public safety side, right? Where we're gonna institute parking on that facade, on that property, this side, yeah, that would be that type. And we have most of the building on the ground floor at that point that has no window opportunity. And although I think that this is a bit heavy handed, I think if it was truly this scenario, we'd probably try to do some, um, trellis, the growth of vines and stuff, right? The question is, well, then if we went, if we simply went to none of those panels, we still have the windows above, right? We still want the, the, the sort of pattern below the window. You know, how do we, how do we handle it here that's similar to somewhere else? Like, did we do this? Do we do, um, do we do a flat facade? And then I know we talked about trying to potentially incorporate the mural from the existing building and I don't know how we would do that. It's on CNU, but do we do a mural on this facade like worth the conversation?
I like the idea that like growing plant on the side of the building, like we did with all the like, all the air just kind of have, have to handle the metal panel from outside to the sides of the road. I think that would look good.
Yeah, okay. I think that there's, there's, we can look at that. I think, I still want to expect, I would still.
You know how they have the metal racks on the side of buildings? They have plants down below that just that grow up.
Yeah, those trip line.
That would cover up that blank space without having all that.
You know, the cost of all that. I think we'd like to try to, whoops, your camera. Um, would like to try to keep those lines. And so maybe it's simply joint lines in the brick that are still carrying down, because for a while before those vines grow, you're gonna see that. Um, so I wouldn't want to, yeah, you'd want to kind of keep some of the pattern, but yeah, the cost of those inset panels, we can alleviate. Now, there's cost of the brick, obviously it'd go in there, but it's an easier transition. Yeah.
I, I personally like the texture of that bricks, like, um, I was looking at the materials and the texture, I like the upper right. That's true. But that is my personal opinion, I think it would be more modern, be a little bit of a building. I think it's fine that we want a more, sort of, series file, but I think it would be nice to, more than I, a little, a little bit of building. You have most of the building is not around a lot, the one that should be like an old building.
Yeah.
That's just my, I mean, I think it's a little, still a little more modern. And that's how I would do it. And maybe replace some, some of the empty areas, uh, make the building look really nice.
Okay. So there's some differing, differing of opinion. I think that, I guess we should, well, we, maybe we should talk, we, we, um, maybe we should just talk about it now. If there, if there is differing opinion, we'll talk about how we want to handle that. Like we can do multiple, multiple things and come back and show, continue to show that, unless everybody else is like, no, I don't like.
That may be from different designs on my, instead of little thing that's fine. I don't like this, but I think there's something else.
I think our, our preference is not a flat facade, but.
I personally don't, but I mean.
You don't, you don't like what sort of.
You know, so I, yeah, my words, yeah, I kind of like corners.
You like what?
I like the corner there.
With the brick sticking out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I, what I mentioned is not this design, I shared it, it's just the, the one on the upper right. Um, it's gonna be a little more.
What was the, this is part of it, I don't think about there. Ben, did you grow it up in the building?
Uh, not there, um, well, I just cleared my, but on the police side or public safety side, taking the parking lot, there is, most of the building can't have windows. So there's a view that we'll look at later, in fact, in fact, that shows that the facade more, where we have those sort of, uh, the openings that are the gray that are in line with this. So we talked about growing vines, not on the building, but on a structure, a trellis, simple trellis structure.
Probably that, a couple of feet.
Yeah, yeah, well, maybe not a couple of feet, but a foot or so, where you're still gonna have a planting structure from the building. So that it's a fence kind of side post with screening and then those vines will grow up that and they'll be off the building, so they won't be affecting the building. So we go down the building.
Yeah, the right image is the one that you were talking about.
Yeah, that's, that one.
I think the way that the, um, the chat out, the being catonic sort of creates a little bit of a different texture. And that's what's interesting is that when we do a texture, it does change throughout the day. So a little bit of temporal from that perspective, might get one, uh, in it in the early morning is it kind of transitions around sort of closer to noon, you're gonna get really long chat on all sides of those. Each that look very, uh, very agile. Okay. Um, I think these other views, we kind of talked about, this is the one that Kevin was, along that.
Yeah, so this is the one along the public safety side we were just talking about. So these panels, these panels here is what we were talking about, then doing a screen in front of that. Now, one of the things that, that can start relating to is over in this corner, and that, we're only showing a few panels, but there's a fence there, right? There's gonna be a security fence to sort of block, because that's gonna be where the public safety entrance is, the private public safety entrance is. And so there will be a fence back there. And so that fence could start then finding to the screen and you're gonna sort of see that one, uh, which we gotta have.
Yeah. Extensively, if you anything, that kind of privacy is, I think, really important because we don't want people to think that they're being barricaded. We don't want them to feel like we kill a person.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have, gosh, this reminds me, our old office, we moved a couple of years ago, but our old office, that little courtyard, we built essentially a steel fence that was like eight feet tall. And we did the vines outside and within a couple of years we had, what was this big open thing, which you can't, and it just became this enclosed room, because you couldn't see through any of that. Now, we got a little too dense and we had a dumpster on the other side of it, our neighbors and super nice, um, some of that. But it was a really great sort of way to screen that room and the fence, like, was a simple steel thing and the vines. It takes some time to grow, but it didn't take that long. It was north facing, so this would be even be better, so it could be really nice.
And there's certainly options for us to work at, in a way that we don't lose, uh, a lot of the vegetation there. So we can certainly look at it a lot. There's also like one in our old office, which kind of, so it's very dark, but really nice, cause it kind of fragrance from that kind of, kind of permeating. Yeah. And so it's a little bit of a background, because that's a public safety entrance.
Something that's low.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I will go up one more image, uh, just to take a look at the, uh, the front entry of the buildings, option two. Um, this really shows, uh, what I kind of talked about earlier about really reading that, that one, um, maybe there would have one, um, to the exterior of the building. Um, you're seeing really sort of the, the wood underside of the canopy and then related into, um, what we're doing on the inside of the building. Um, but there's another opportunity here, and that is the blank facade of where we have our restaurants on ground floor. Um, they're adjacent to our front entry and we can't really go with those side of the restaurants, because that's not. Um, so how do we deal with that? This just shows a similar kind of tree that you're like, uh, other side of this, reset me, I put a metal panel in there and provides a lot of the signage. However, there's many opportunities. Um, it's just one, but this is an area that I think we'll sort of dive into a little bit further. And sort of create maybe with a similar language, what we're going to get some of the other, uh, corners of the building. But we certainly have some opportunities, uh, for designing. Uh, but we definitely wanted to highlight that we have something that we're working on. We have a, uh, front of the building, can't have windows directly adjacent to the front entry of the building. Is there something that you guys absolutely want to see there? Uh, is the sign appropriate? Is that what we want to see? Is it the, the Carlton logo there?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, potentially go to reader board.
Reader board.
What?
Reader board.
Mark brought up, uh, so one of the things that's not, since this was option, this was shown in option two, that, that, that right now, that opening is the same size as the window openings we were showing in option three for the public, for the community room. So there is something nice about that. If it went to more of a reader board sign, um, it, you know, it might have more of that sort of glossy character of windows. So, you know, maybe we just try to somehow integrate a similar sort of, uh, reporting in windows to this one thing, a little bit. Yeah. Yeah, it's low, I think, so I guess one question for the reader board would be like when people are driving by and, you know, is that, is that, that's at eye level, which is good, but you're not gonna see it from a distance. So then it's like, okay, you're gonna see it when you're driving by right in front of it. So you're looking like 90, you know, there versus like seeing from a distance. But there's, I think it's a potentially a good spot. I think there's some investigation about exactly how we see it. Um, and that could be a little distracting, potentially when you're driving, which is probably why your sign code doesn't allow it either. A lot of just the look of it. But it is an ideal spot if it works.
I think you need something noting that it's the city hall.
Yes.
Or something like maybe a display case or something. You can almost take that, you have it.
Well, I'm just saying if I'm coming from out of town and, you know, I don't know that that's the city hall, something, something saying, whether it's the logo or something, somebody knows, I mean, we'll all know.
Yeah. Yeah, oftentimes older buildings had a more of like a cast, either plaque or something inscribed. And so, and although this is a big, and right now we're just showing it, sort of a logo on metal panel. I guess one of the thoughts is it could be that kind of plaque-like entrance to the building and it could have, you know, a bit more texture to it. It would be a nicer material, maybe not quite as large as this, so maybe there's a breakdown of that.
So if we were to take that, that logo you got there and that, and if you moved it up to your reset panel, you know, on the top of the building.
Yeah. Do that. Yeah, you don't see it from the street, I mean, you'll still, still need some sign at the street level, I think, so that people walking by will, will want, will see it. But yeah, that's a good, that's a good opportunity, that logo right up there.
You could also do lettering on the windows.
Yeah.
Or on the canopy itself.
Yeah, the canopy, we've done a lot where we put the lettering around it, it's pretty clear what it is.
Not the logo, but just kind of a whole.
And I think what we can do is we can, we can take a pass at, you know, the awning, uh, design options as well as maybe some signage options.
Another thing that came to my mind is that people are proposing the awning that will hold the whole, the front, front of the building. You know, if you had a reader board under there, what does that do?
It'll sure visually too.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this is in the back of the building, we have already, um, there.
There's some, I think there's some, still some work to be done just on what you're, well, less about the brick pattern, I think, I'll go with that. But you can see the little, the sort of minimal entry into the public safety side, which is there with a little canopy. And there's work to be done there about that too, um, and some discussions with chief to really talk about how that wants to feel. You know, especially if it's screened more from the west side, that's great, but we know we don't want a big glass door into the public safety side. Um, but there probably needs to be a bigger canopy back there and, uh, and the whole way you're getting in there right now in, in this sketchup model is not super accurate to the plan.
So this view right here is actually the.
It's where, like where the police building is right now, like.
Yeah, but it's facing, it's basically the west facing.
Yes, so, yeah, the, this is.
Was thinking it was.
This is the west face.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the north face. Right now, so where you're standing from this view is essentially where that building is at the back corner.
Wait, tell me again where the west face was.
Uh, here. So this is the west face, these cars are where that building is. So that building goes away and that's cars.
Yeah, this is all.
That's north.
And what you also see here too is that there will be fencing required, um, kind of breaking this up from the public safety side. But it's omitted here just so you can see, uh, the building and what we're doing, um, but we'll be, we'll be showing that in better presentation.
As you can all the way back.
Yeah, this, and, and to be quite honest, um, we are working with Gordon Monroe, city engineer, because he's been coordinating that north parking lot. We need to get a reply way up for that fencing occurs and how all that happens. There's some change to, uh, with that working model, maybe. The location of our generator, the internet for all, and all that, things incorporated into that design, uh, but from this standpoint right now, we have a bit of that to.
Well, all public parking visually is on the west side.
Um, the, the proposed, uh, location, yeah, there is public parking, parking on the west side, but as of right now, we haven't isolated it from the parking lot. Only, uh, please, uh, we're still anticipating it to be, to be, um, some public parking. We assume that would be, yeah, we assume it would be city hall staff, uh, in the, in the northern parking lot. Not necessarily utilizing this white parking lot or, or staff, but this would be your primary public parking. I mean, and, and, and how that north lot for staff is accessed, if there is something, if it's more private, if there's a way to make it more private. I, I, we haven't really crossed that bridge yet, so I don't know. I'm gonna say anything, but, uh. Okay, we'll be, uh, almost 11:00, it's almost mature.
You have like a 75 on the break?
Yeah. Yes, right over there on the right phone side.
And clearly, if you're ever over in Wollaston, we're kind of back over by where they're at is over behind. So that lives back from that, they actually have a showroom that you guys can go into, Bermuda, yours. It's on, uh. Shoal Berry, I believe it is. And so they've got stuff all over the walls, you can go in. Pretty good size, pretty good sized showroom there.
Even in the bedrooms. I have a partner at home.
We have rugs.
Yeah, that's not good enough for him.
My whole life before. You know, you get stained, you know, you never quite get it clean. Really, always. She did. My most expensive area to go to.
Thank you, Mel. I don't know why they have that hat, but they do.
They just know.
Very feeling good, but. Oh, Kevin today?
Yeah.
You can have. Yes, any building, load, quote. We're out, we're out, we actually drive by.
Um, in Portland, we, uh, boys and girls, did we have that texture brick?
Yep, on the whole side, um, yeah. Easy, I think. Yeah, well, I would say not. Boys and girls, I think it's true. Like even more of a pattern that looks like something, you can open the website.
Anything men build? No, I didn't think of that. But I see a lot of bell sand in your building. Because I went by yesterday and they have a whole bunch of takeoff. First several buildings. Lot of bricks yesterday. I'd say well, if either they have a lot of. Or they were short. Never got them. Shut them. That's all about the east side. When you're coming back from mode, you drive by.
I'm not sure. I think we're gonna do that right now. During all the construction. We're looking at the porch of buildings right now and other options, maybe utilizing even those metal buildings back there. Um, so I'm, I think the city of Monmouth is undergoing this right now and just moved it before we go in, so I.
Color as well to really highlight it. We're suggesting trying to do more minimalistic, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's what you, that's what you want to do. If you want to do that on the corner. Yeah, okay, yeah. So this is, this is a project we have over in, uh, Rock, where, uh, with Boys and Girls, uh, adjacent to. But this is a really, really cool design where you had a, a plain front, frontage that needed, um, you know, decorative element. Okay, I just quickly wanted to recap, um. What we've heard so far before we dive into interiors. Um, so from the interior options, um, what we really liked was, um, the option to run into your sequence where we carved. Um, kind of creating that sort of larger volume to the, uh, beside, uh, differentiating that larger volume, I should say. Um, there's also a desire to incorporate, um, option three, window pattern in a community room with, uh, use of entry points. Um, and then that way we can kind of take a look further at how that for the reader board and. Uh, front facade happens to be into the, the main entry. Uh, there was also been commentary on, uh, roof bill height, uh, at the ground floor windows. As well as, um, detailing around the window headers and rentals. Um, we can look at sort of what it would look like in potential cross impacts on radius, you know, headers, uh, at the upper floor. Uh, we can take a look at additional options in color or just material, and say we have the. And then, um, additionally, at, at the corners line, um, on the paracord of the top of the building. Look at, uh, incorporating some brick details to really call attention to that form. Um, similarly, it would be tied into what we were. And then, uh, lastly, from the ground floor perspective, looking at, uh, really to study, uh. Awning and canopies, how they are incorporated along the street of the building next to them. Essentially, how far they go, uh, along the other building. And then lastly, um, really taking a look again further at that reader board option. Um, and how to incorporate maybe some additional textures. Any other big comments that you guys would like to get included, um? Sort of a, a record of something.
One of the things that nobody's brought up at, um, maybe it's not appropriate for this other building. Um. And on the side where you're, you mentioned earlier about where do we fit in the mural? People would like mural. And I don't know on, once again, possibly on that public safety side, but we're trying to figure out something to put in there. Might be something to look at.
Yeah, one of, I've got that down with the sort of studying that whole area finds or mural. Shannon, you had mentioned that maybe you knew somebody who had mentioned knowing how to sort of save that mural. It's on CMU, so do you know what that entails?
I don't, I don't know anything beyond that statement. I haven't investigated further.
Because I guess I just assumed it would be more of a replicated, like copy it, not a take it off. It's just paint on a. Block, so I'm assuming it'd be more documented, redo it.
I can do a thing for you, mentally. We didn't want something that's quite, and I really like that mural. I need to see it. Be lost completely, but the other option, uh, doing something that we liked the muraling on the, uh.
Oh, yeah, that one is nice as well. Yep.
What Mark said, that, that, that John, I'm trying to make sure if he moves forward in that direction, that somebody doesn't feel strongly against that.
I feel strongly against, um, anything that's going to increase cost. I, I mean, I'm, I say that jokingly, but being serious, um. You know, we all design our houses different ways and we have different feelings. I mean, keeping in mind that this is a community building. Um, and so doing it tactically and, you know, some of the things that were brought up and, you know, radiuses and things like that, it's. It scares me because, you know, as you pointed out, it could really increase the cost dramatically. And I, I do like the, the awning, you know, on this front side, I do feel like it would be a waste, like you mentioned over on this side. So things like that, like, kind of throws red flags at me of like. Maybe that cost in mind.
Yeah, so I think, um, that's great. I, I think that. You know, for us, we're typically pretty honest about like things like that. So we feel. We're being asked to do it and I'm, I'm going to mention it now, but we might still look at it and, and mention it again and say, hey. Everybody really likes this, so we know that there's cost associated with this, so we either. We'll, we can then figure out how we handle that when we see people, this is a thing that we really want. And it definitely needs to be in the budget and we'll figure out a way, other things come down. Or this is a nice to have and we'll put it on a alternate list and like, well, we, we'll put it in the mix for pricing and. We need to take it off, we'll take it off. And so that's typically how we handle something like that, um. You know, so as far as the candidate goes, the curving bricks is going to be harder because. To be honest, we don't want to go too far with detail on one thing and then have to change it later. So we'll want to try to get some cost in for that. And I think look at it and make sure everybody is on the same page, whichever way we go, uh, but. So I, I appreciate the comments and we're, you know, we're usually pretty honest about it and, you know, we don't want to spend a bunch of time redoing things. Well, so.
But, yeah, and we've got our parts, yeah. We just say that if we have an idea or have a thought, don't be afraid to bring it up.
Sure.
And ask because you guys will tell us if that's going to be a problem or not.
Yeah.
I think, um, that, I think I would like to have only grade solar panels, but have full panels there. I don't want somebody to lose the budget or take some house to add those as well. The long term would say that's one issue.
Yeah, I think that there are grant opportunities for that. I think it's something that should be, should be looked at because it'd be great to be able to. You know, like that.
And ETO grants right now, they can almost. Like a break to go with it.
Yeah.
Who said?
Like you said, the building is going to be.
Solar ready.
Your code is going to be solar panel ready, but plug and play. A year down the road or something, they can be added.
And I think the best way to approach that, that budget is to clear the. Including the budget, if you have the funding, if not, that can be sort of put into a separate budget category that. We know that we're in a place where the builder can handle it easily implemented and, uh, when the budget becomes available in the future. If it's not available. Uh, but obviously, you know, best case.
One of the things we're looking at for this whole thing too is that we are looking at funding options for different parts of this. So depending on what we're looking at doing to include August, some other types of. Of mitigative. We're looking at grants and other ways to, so we can always start with saying, okay, here's where we are. We're going to be starting with bottom line, but if something comes along that we have some money to do. A little bit of an upgrade.
Right.
We're able to do that. You know, we started, started the bottom line, we're about.
Yeah, emergency backup. I think that we are required by code to have the, um, the generator backup. Um, I know that we looked at that previously, whether we can provide a battery backup system, you know, in case of a power group. Because we're going to report them in that category, being that emergency operation, uh, we have to have a longer period of time that, uh. Provide a power without power being supplied by the large power grid. Provide a power without power being supplied by the large grid. So I think that puts us into the generator capacity. We can certainly evaluate whether to use it. You know, larger storage capacities for batteries for total. Right, let's jump into interior. This space is actually mobile. All right, as you guys probably already put ahead. Interior resident images, you know, this is just sort of contextual material. We've looked at before and we've incorporated into the project and you'll be seeing. You'll see some, some larger blue land beams. That's really going to be the primary structural component. That we wanted to spread on the ground floor, specifically at the community room. And then you're going to see a lot of natural materials. We are putting a lot of the dubber that is, you know, kind of the teeth from surrounding the building. Just a nice patch of material to bring in. Even if you are in the case work or anywhere. Whether it's flooring or sort of flooring, but any other ceiling work issue, really bringing in that natural material. As well as utilizing a nice form palette for the overall elements of the project. I'm going to quickly explain, these are a couple of projects of ours and then one that's not. This is actually a project of ours called One North. And it says massive three story atrium, but it's a really beautiful project. It had a lot of sharp. Fresh blue lamb and not lock deck, it was, yeah, it was lock deck, yeah, lock deck. Lock deck type of flooring and essentially a really thick. Wood and crew panel that they all lock together and creates your structural diaphragm instead of having, you know, it's easy as it's like that. It's actually a dapture, actual flooring. Really beautiful. If you can have it exposed from underneath, you'll look and see it. And that's one thing that we did here and you can see that we also incorporated things like breakaway heads without it being intrusive. Similarly, on the upper floors, this is a project we did for wall construction. It's always a little bit security to build a project for a contractor, but. Perfect plan of project for a contractor, but this is their, their main headquarters. And they had exposed roof trusses that we brought in into the project and really again create this sort of openness of structure. Bring the warmth of. Cloudy materials in from wood ceiling and really just keep it nice open. And that's something that we're still striving for. And then in the center image, this is really another image of one more. And this is, it's really showing the transparency between interior exterior or kind of bringing in those larger. Data lighting opportunities and what that kind of looks like. The upper right image is again another image, not of our project, but of another project that really utilizes this with tall. An incrementation of amenities and columns to help identify even bait open bait on for a upward direction.
Great caveat with the interior arrangements. So we thought that the exterior, we understand that the exterior arrangements are sketchy, right? Cause they're. You know, we just settled on the plan on Monday and then we developed that exterior model with, with, to kind of get some things to talk about today. The interiors are even a step more sketchy than that. Interior views. Take quite a bit to sort of make them even feel more sort of real, like plants and furniture. And we're not at that level yet, right? So I want to make sure that everybody understands like we're, we're trying to show that the interior is progressing. How it relates to what we had done before, a little bit of materiality, but it's to understand a bit more scale of the spaces. So you're going to see the office spaces and sort of the desks and like, understand the volumes there. And can talk a little bit about materiality, but I don't want to, I want people to be careful that we know that they're not, they don't have everything in there. They're not the warmest thing right now. There were a quick study to make sure we understand the scale of spaces. And it takes a lot more to get the interiors to feel like you're going to want them with people. We know that.
This is our material board. We still feel it's valid from our 2020 efforts. Brings in the natural wood tone, brings in some color colors that are kind of natural to the surrounding area, the jewelry soil, soil colors. And then some natural sort of safety dubber, green colors to kind of bring in as well as our exterior. As we transition into interior, we're going to bring some of those colors in directly into our. Main community room. Main community room is still very similar to all the previous efforts where we have. The exposed blue land means really providing that visual representation of structure, but also the warmth of the material. As well as our lock deck flooring system in there, which is really brings that exposing of the material or above. Nice natural material, maybe wood, that really helps to create the warmth in that space. And then we're transitioning that down along the walls, along the northern wall of the community room, that creates the backdrop for the dais. And we're envisioning there is a, is a wood slatted wall and you can't even actually see the doors in it as we're sort of, sort of. Nestled in amongst the flat of, of the wall, but create the really nice texture with experience as well as a warmth from, from the wood. And then that provides us opportunities to, you know, side edge or whether we have screens or whatever. And then lastly, we have the material of the space where, you know, this kind of automatically showing what the seating would look like. We are showing that sort of wine red. Type of seating color fabric for that. And then really just juxtaposed by the natural concrete on, on the floor. So you get a really nice warm ceiling and then juxtaposed with the really natural night and durable concrete floor.
I think that one thing with that view to talk about is the permanent versus flexible nature of that. So yeah, so what we put in there, and I think that was really just for a conversation and some conversations with Shannon Christie's. Ideally, it's tables and desks or tables that can be folded up and moved out to storage. So that room is flexible. It doesn't provide, what, very similar to these, right? That doesn't provide for. Doesn't provide for the look of the dais that we had before. That was much more built in and kind of there. But with the size and the spacing, you know, flexibility that we might want for future. Before, I think we had a much smaller dais and people were sitting. Four feet part of the hooks maybe. And so this is bigger, provides that and the idea would be that things can be pulled up. Now, are people okay with that kind of, like it not feeling and looking permanent in that space and that is flexible? As everybody understands that, what we're showing right now is sort of a half moon shape. We can go back to the plan later, but the fifth, the seven decks tables in up there, it's a bit of a curve, right? So yes, from the end, you can see everybody ideally, not a full curve. Because what that's going to do is put you on the sides of people. It's going to limit the amount of chairs that you're going to want in there. So we're kind of trying to do the half moon to get some of that visibility across. You're not in a line. But the chairs, we don't have to push the chairs so far back to get one.
The fact is, we can figure it however we want. Everything's moving.
So we divide this row in six spaces. Is that correct?
No, you're not going to be able to divide it into six because there's not going to be ways to get into three of those. Like you could divide it into three the long way and that's where the doors are into the, to the lobby.
On the other side of these beams. Aesthetically, we'll have to figure out how to incorporate that. But again, then, then your room dividers would be made kind of all along the sides here as well. So that this phase really you could, this would be one primary bay. You could also have a middle, middle bay be a bay, the floor over that would be a bay. Or, you know, we talked about this a little bit, that, you know, if, if multiple room dividers become slow to access to be. We know we want to at least have one to identify this, this southern bay as the primary bay. To have at least be able to do that. There's certainly flexibility for this room to be multiple different sizes based upon its usage.
I think those, those movable walls can get pretty offensive. They affect your structure too, because you can't have. You have that sort of overstructure like that beam that they'll be hanging from, needs to be overstructured because it can't move at all. Typically, a beam is going to flex a little bit, especially with the floor upstairs. So they won't be able to do that because those doors, you know, you can't correct them. So it can't flex at all. So that'll be overstructured a little bit to make that happen. I think that there's, we need to talk and it doesn't need to be today, but I think people need to think about it. I think that if we did two of those and be able to break it into three, I think you're over dividing it. Like I think that you, the chances of using three of those rooms at one time would be very minimal. And for the cost of those doors, which are pretty expensive. I do think the front room, like a downtown entry is good. And you also then have a bigger second room, right? You still have essentially three room configurations. You have a small, medium and a large at that point. As opposed to three smalls and then you could have a small and a medium. So I think that there's, there's a cost there for those doors that we really want to consider. Is that realistic to how it would potentially be used? And is there really enough use for three small rooms? To spend on that second set of doors?
Now, on those doors, how are you planning on framing those in to hide them?
That's a good question. I think we need to figure that out. Still, we haven't investigated.
Second question on that is, could be framed in so we can put more doors in later?
Yes, like we could structure it so that, yeah, we could structure it so that there's no movement. As long as the structure is set up and, you know, the structural engineer knows that this, this thing can't move. Because as long as that's handled, then the door company can come and install the track and put those things in.
Cause the track door does labor and costs a lot and that people don't think you're starting to worry about.
And they would more than likely bank against one of these walls. You have a, it would be almost like a closet, right? They bring it into a business that would look like a closet. That would hold all of your, your security room divided.
And they fold into, you know, stack and then there's going to be a good depth. Depending on how deep that is, we might go both ways. And so we might have an option inside and outside our walls. Well, you know, we'll want to set up lighting so that it's out in the middle of those bays. We'll want to set up ducts that they're not crossing, you know? So that's something, actually, the mechanical, the ducts will be a big one. Cause we can't necessarily have a duct running north and south in that room then, right? We'll either have to, have to figure out how we get the ducts in there so that. We can have these closing doors and not have a duct running underneath the beam. So. All stuff that we will, we need to just get through it and consider.
The floor is not going to be carpet. Playing on something like an exercise class or something.
We're assuming it's a concrete like slab on grade floor finish and not carpet. I think that, you know, we've been talking about that. That's been our assumption.
Yeah, there's certainly options. I mean, the, the most economical would be to do the concrete slab on grade. You can always play with the carpet. You know, carpet, you know, it would be nice for acoustics in the room, but the wood is going to be a little bit. It's going to absorb better than some of the other, you know, too. But that being said, you know, with the different uses that this, this room is going to have, putting carpet in there. You're going to have certain areas that wear more than others. It might have the durable material of, you know, flat on grade. It can be a clear deal. So we'll be sealed and not getting stained or whatnot. Where the carpet, you know, you're going to have to replace tiles and it's a, it's a whole other conversation to have. Look at it. But as of right now, we've been sort of just looking at a clear ceiling concrete. On a diet, color. No, not, not necessarily. Again, that's another conversation we have. Colors can go a lot of different ways for, for staying concrete.
Is that a high, is that a high pop?
It's not terribly offensive, but.
Integral, integral color is staining not so much, but you know, but then you get a color that's. Not a smooth color and people have different opinions on what it's modeled and then what color is it? Is it red or green?
The tough part about, about that is once you put a color down, you never really. And we've done, we've been through that on other projects with our T side project. They changed their color to. Sort of a dark gray color over the years because the previous color was orange and everything. They wanted to change, but it only can only be dark light.
Probably concrete is just more.
Heat and warmth. Okay, so that's image number one. So we'll keep going through here. This is looking kind of from the diet south towards this eating and out towards Main Street. This is really showing the window patterning from the number one and Q. But we can certainly re-rendered it with option three to show the, the larger windows. If you can imagine though, that these gaps in between the windows, they would essentially be pulled apart. So you have three large windows rather than a smaller windows. And this really shows that curve of dais.
The doors into the, yeah, they're a storefront system, metal doors. What do you mean? I'm sorry. Oh, well, on the doors, those are probably a hollow metal. So it's just a painted feel. Yeah, yeah. On the interior ones, exterior ones would be more of an aluminum. But you can get this kind of same color.
Yeah, if you could look previously at wood storefront system along this, but again, as Kevin mentioned in the beginning. With storefront system and wooden storefront doors are very, very expensive because they're all, they're not meant at all. They're all painted absolutely. So we wanted to kind of curb that. I was there right off that. Okay, we're going to go with the technical and U listing. We're probably going to end up there.
And there's a lot of wood, like if you're doing this wood structure and wood ceiling and. Wood doors on top of it can come overwhelming sometimes. So in this model right now, this model has four of the floors. So on the, from that, the concrete, so the next floor at 12 feet. And then some of it depends on structure because we still need to get in structural engineering, design a new structure for the width. That top of that, the bottom of that beam is probably going to be somewhere in the 10 foot range, but still pretty tall. That's what that, I think that's what that represents right now. And that'll, that might ever take a few inches depending on the size of those beams that have to go in, but. That's a pretty good clearance.
Is it taller than this?
Eight and a half, maybe? The, the typical door like that one behind you is, well, I'd say seven, but that one might be six eight in here. So yeah, it's quite a bit taller.
Yeah, I'm just using meters of visual.
Or maybe.
Well, well. So that's one ninety six, so that's eight feet. So eight meters is twenty four, right? Meters per foot? No.
Yeah, I can, I can see on this.
It's, it's much taller. All right. So this is going to take a drop from the lobby. You'll see that there's some similarities to police design here on how this lobby is darting now or go back to a full height, a double height atrium. Which is really nice for the space. So what it does allows us for some opportunities along the inside of this wall, but the, you know, kind of panelized wood material. It brings in a similar concept of what we did on a previous effort where we lined this space with, with wood. Previously was exterior and now we're sort of bringing in the same concept in the interior. That's really going to help from the exterior perspective when you're looking at the building here and see that, that wood paneling really radiate out of the force of material. And then you're going to see that the double height space does communicate with the second floor landing where it's. They all, and then also it can be back to their.
The thought on the left of this picture, the sort of recessed dark areas would be where some of the. History sort of artifacts we're talking about, that we're kind of framing them very sort of to match the doors on the one side. Kind of getting this sort of symmetrical nature of that space. And then that could be well applied. It could be, you know. We don't have a lot of room to do like a full recess cabinet box because of just the width of public safety side of the building. We don't have a lot to spare. Not that we can't build out a little bit more into the function, but that's the idea is that those would kind of be, those are places to display. Sort of a historical. Yes, yes, for sure. Yeah, there's a lot of. Both feet. Yeah.
But you can often see in this image is. Transition back as we go to the structure of the building. Oh, it's a headline.
That is the headline.
I thought I got it. But I misspoke civic as well during first. All right, so this is the view from the second floor looking out towards that double height space. Again, we're sort of creating this nice one, a good ceiling and then wood handling walls. As it as it transitions out, it really creates this really lovely corridor of natural material, warming the space up. You know, as as we develop these views further, we'll start to see what some lighting options look like. But this is really a really good view looking out towards the screen from that second floor.
I think that this view gets cropped a little bit because of the size of the image, but the reality is that guardrail you're seeing there goes down to the floor, right? So the idea is that there would be transparent enough that you're seeing down into that space more. I don't, I think you lose that a little bit with this imagery. You know, feel, there's more open there, the view down into that entry to see the doors and to see the people down there at that level.
I'm glad you put the quantity in there because that's feeling me like in forty. Okay.
Sometimes we forget that we look at it so much and we're like, oh, we're going to definitely.
Yeah. All right, so now we're going to jump over to City Hall offices, just looking north. And this is where we're kind of placed towards the southern wall, kind of where the main few offices are. And then we're looking more into the. Kitchen net area as well as the open office component. All we're showing here is is again sort of the expressed U L A B structure on the second floor as well as the open roof track system. Bringing back that that warmth from the natural materials. You're really going to see that from the exterior as well as we look in this building here to see that nice one bringing it out. This has been a goal of the project, you know, dating back to two days, was really seeing how we can make the project not seem cold, but warm and inviting. And this is one of the ways that we have, is really incorporating it.
Yeah, they're just roof trusses. Well, they're transferring the roof. Yeah, so they go, maybe they're a bit deceptive, but. So this is one trust, right? And then there every four feet. Essentially, they're allowing the roof to span between those four sections and that's so that's pulling up. So they're really just two by fours with metal pipe in between and that creates the trust. Does that make sense?
But you know, the open design, like it's that problem. Has that changed or is that changing as you are looking at other designs you're doing? You know what I mean?
Not dramatically as far as like going back to all enclosed offices. I think that. Yeah, I mean, you, there are a lot of things that you can do with the partitions and go taller and create more for more separation in those partitions themselves. With still giving you flexibility for the future. Shannon knows, we actually looked at a plan option that took. So essentially this office has four enclosed offices and then six desks, right? So there's ten both folks that could go in there. We looked at an option that was all offices, no open space as far as open that area. And the the concern or the problem we came with that is that you were left with a space in the middle that wasn't super usable. And it just essentially cut off any light coming into the bigger space. You can, and we're showing a partition that, you know, maybe comes up here and you can do taller. And in our office, we actually have, we have very similar desks to that with the partition about here. We actually, they they make now, because everybody needs to, as soon as COVID came, every company like that was like, oh, my God, what do we do? And so they now they've created things that sit on top of those partitions, like put them on and then you create an additional screen. That can then give you flexibility for future. So those have proven to be really good. But then you you get similar openness without committing like, hey, let's fill all these walls and then not be able to change it.
So we went from high to low and then COVID did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we went back and forth from that individual office versus open space, it seemed like this fit the needs now. Where it but allowed for us to close it in later as we got more staff as I will want. So in thirty years, this may be more closed, more cubicle like, but for right now, it allows more collaboration between the offices. Do you, how do you deal with the need for private conversations? There are closed offices. There's four closed offices.
Okay. Four closed offices and then one conference room.
Right.
We closed conference room and then two open meeting areas.
Yeah, I wasn't getting from the conversation. Everything.
Yeah, no, not everything. Yep. There's still four fully enclosed, two bigger offices and then two medium sized offices and then a large conference room that's fully enclosed. And then like Kim had said, I mean, the way we've set up the plan, we have two offices that are essentially in the corner. The stop corner of the building. So they kind of look over the street. Yeah, if you want to, it gives us the flexibility of sort of filling in in the future with offices along. This this side. So, yeah, so there's the two enclosed offices that sit on main. And then, you know, if on the left, if those desks wanted to go later and you created more offices along that wall, you can. So that's a possibility. The other thing to talk about too is what we're showing in the plans and in these views is. The open, the desk spaces that we have, they're all centralized in the space. They're not against the exterior wall. And there's reason for that. And the reason for that is that. The the more we put desks on the exterior, the more impact it has on the windows that we can do, right? So you're going to put desks there, suddenly you're going to have to raise your windows so quite a bit. It changes proportions a lot. And then it gives you sort of less flexibility, less light coming in. And then you're not, you know, you then you're have to be very careful about where you put the windows and we might lose some of our sort of repetitive pattern. Or rhythmic pattern. And we might start moving them around and it's going to sort of mess up the order of the building. So keeping them all off of those walls is ideal.
And this, it kind of goes way back and I'm sorry, but it just popped into my mind is ADA accessibility for the upper floors.
Oh, yeah, there's elevator.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go back and show that plan, but.
No, that's fine. I'm sure it's in there and I just missed it.
Yeah, the door on the right here, that door that you're seeing, just on the edge of the image. Is the restroom, private restroom for the offices and that backs up to the elevator. So the elevator cores there and the restroom right behind it, which is the same elevator or or bathroom location that's behind the community room. So they're right there.
And to speak to your point about rebuilding, one of the biggest difficulties for. Thing of building is getting push and pull like off or you do the building. And so that one of the efforts of having a large, that's windows and not pushing that out is a great part of everything there to be more man.
And I realize you're showing the doors and the big windows behind, but those two doors will have to be solid for HR reasons for the conversations.
So there can be any glass into those.
Cause you wouldn't want somebody to see if you're having another conversation with an individual for HR purposes.
Okay, which can maybe frost the glass or something so there's no light. Yeah, okay.
And by any chance, I know that we're going to need to leave here with adjacent real line, whether we would have a lower shade on that to close that down.
As long as you can have a private conflict with an individual where somebody can't be identified necessarily for HR purposes.
Okay, and we have a couple more images here. These are the public safety wing. So we're just going to pop over to that side and this is looking north. Open off component of public safety wing. You're looking directly in the peace office here on the right side. And then towards the left side of the image, you're looking north towards the around the corner, which is the next to the kitchen and area. This is their sort of business area where they would have their printer.
Lots of conversations, still to be had about how the desk function. And, you know, their L shaped desks, their straight desks, how much storage is needed and all that. But these are placeholders just to see how they feel in there.
This is the kind of people meetings slash kitchen dining area for the public safety. From this image, the channel is really well, we talked about earlier, that there's always going to be these issues down Main Street and downtown. It's a really, really wonderful aspect of the project that now you have two story refunctioning up. Again, we're still sticking with the same exposed structural for our confidence in our wood ceiling. On the upper floor, we are currently carpeted. And as you can see, the carpet actually looks very similar to what we're depending on right now. That will help a little bit for acoustics for the ground floor. If we want to do that anywhere, we'll be at an office on the side of floor. That is it aside from, you know, we just have some previous interior images that we worked on before. Really, really the intent here, though, was the same kind of language that we were talking about previously. With materials and and how the faces are are clad and colored.
The community room, yes. Yeah, so the community room, we're assuming has complete facilities. The kitchenette's upstairs in the offices besides the microwave, no. And I think what, 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 we probably need to really determine what can happen in that community room. Like if it's a full on cooking kitchen, commercial hood, because that's what would be required, there's a cost to that. If it's a more of a heating kitchen and there's no cooking and grease stuff, then that's a different type of hood that can be less costly. So I think we need to, you know, determine what we want to allow people to do there. Typically, you know, I think if it's a an emergency situation, you're going to be cooking, that's one thing. I think if it's every event, they're going to be typically, you're not going to have an event where somebody comes to do cooking, like a full cook in the kitchen. They'll they'll heat in warm until you provide that upper.
Yeah, right.
Second point about emergency, right? We want to use this building as a place for people to gather in. You have an airplane or something, you could.
Yeah, I think that that'll have that capability. I think if it's, if we identify it as there's this cooking all the time, it changes some of the requirements. I think if it's just an emergency situation, there'll still be an oven, in a hood, in a in a cooktop. It's just about how it's being used and how often.
I can, so I mean, not cooking all the time, but I can anticipate people wanting to have.
Okay. It really just comes down to the exhaust on the hood type of hood that it is, so it's not, that's not a big, a big deal if that's what we want to target.
Yeah, the difference is, imagine you have a residential hood, right? And and a commercial.
It's just bigger fan and some more fire requirements around that hood. Or you got out fires and press them. A lot more involved.
It's probably very similar to flash stations.
Yeah, it's one of those things that we can, we can target. And then when we get, we put it in there and when we see what the budgeting is, we can. The council can make a determination on what that need, what that need is.
Okay. That concludes our presentation. Any other comments on the interiors that you guys wanted to touch on?
Windows in the picture. Basically, the bottom portion of their audio windows.
Yeah, that's the idea in there. In there, to be honest, we haven't really talked about, part of it's to minimize how much tempered glass is required. But those sills are, I think, lower than eighteen, so there's a certain portion that you untemper. That would be rate so a little bit. We don't need tempered, you know. Then we can put that, we can really put the opable where we want. And so in those situations, I think we're going on in kind of lower portions. But the reality is we could do an opable on the top and it could open wider because above, it's at thirty-six inches above the floor. And it doesn't have a wing that are like four inches. So that's something we can kind of get into more and decide. Do we want little corners down here to bring in air down low? Or do we want wider windows so people can stand back and. And look out or, you know, which isn't typical in an office, but we can determine that. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the kitchen then becomes appliances and casework. And so it's very easy to sort of remove that though, once everything is stowed in for it or. You know, at that point, we're going to continue to design it as that and then take out the casework and the appliance. It's, it's easy.
The one can have you on as they would be for. Popping that in layer really isn't a problem.
Well, yeah, depending on where we put the exhaust. I mean, it's, yeah, it's just roughing in for that, just like.
Typically, in a commercial level kitchen, you're looking at gas, road, and fuel too, which we're not necessarily talking about right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think that when it comes down to it, there's a lot of different types of commercial appliances or commercial kitchen types, right? And in our experience, this type of space will need, will want the commercial capacity of the hood. So that if you want to cook something and you want to fry something on the cooktop, it's getting the air out and there's no issue with that. The appliances themselves can still be an electric appliance, not a, maybe it's not your bottom of the line, you eat. It's a nicer appliance, right? But it can still handle that type of cooking. And I think that that in my eyes would begin from our experience is acceptable. Like nobody, I don't think anybody's going to be coming in here and expecting the kitchen that they're going to get from a fine dining establishment down the road. That's just not realistic for the costs in the budget. And then it would be bigger because appliance, those appliances get bigger, the fridges get deeper and wider and. And there's more, you know, refrigeration and other things that we're not planning for in the space that we have. But I think if you, if you provide the exhaust that you need, a good quality range, cooktop and ovens. Then that's going to suit the needs and then you provide the space for people to do their setup and, you know. From our experience, that would be sort of that middle ground, you call it a commercial kitchen. Because the hood is, the hood is really a code requirement. So if it's a commercial type kitchen. The code, the the code will require a certain amount of or a certain type of hood. And so that's really what, what we say commercial kitchen will refer, is the exhaust, getting the, the, any type of grease heat out of the room. The rest of the time to. Different grades, obviously, like.
Have you seen any verrous community deals being done here? And then that kind of.
I, you know, we've talked about this being an emergency. Shelter.
I would say location, yeah. But also I think about the meeting center, actually, it's going to be built also at one day at one time. We got to think about that also.
We gotta think about that also, that we're not gonna be the only place, cause they are a vision, we have a community center, which could be more so, a place that if they're gonna want to build it, it's a problem.
You're talking about, tell me about the great.
Yes.
Yeah, see, I'm saying with that, that will be more of a disaster community, where everybody go.
Which not that we would be now, that we're ahead of them and already built, but in the same token, they're gonna also be another place to go.
Yeah.
Could you keep telling me one thing a little bit? I know they're working on doing that. I would think that they would be quality of emergency, more so an older emergency center than this building.
Is that, well-
It's something that we need to talk about, I'm just saying, that's what my thoughts are.
Community centers are usually more of a place to go, I know, places like under the, the quicks and things like that that happen, usually people-
And if you get the YMP, we have two buildings there too, that's cool, isn't it?
So I think the two months that was making this building the main one, the main community center, the stress, you know, disaster building, which, which would be a D.
I'm just talking out loud, it's just something to think about, I'm not, I'm not stressing, that's what's gonna happen. I'm just thinking, there's other options, just like, just thinking about that. Who's already there, none of you? I'm not sure. I have a couple. I think it's far, it's a lot, it's a lot of, it's hard. Exactly, he's probably really done sign, they've got a lot of money saved. I have never been to a meeting, so yeah, I can't.
I was at the very beginning of the meeting years ago.
And I, I know it's-
It's, it's a problem.
Yes.
I think there's certainly a difference in the discussion with a community center for disaster, versus the operation center. This is what this building is trying for, how you look, pretty part of that, right? So we're in, we're in people like this, emergency operators, so if people think, you know, well, I'll, you know, I mean, we'll create that kind of, more necessarily for people that come in and pop them in. So I think that's what you're talking about, community center, and that made a lot more sense. Yeah, I just wanna be, you know, aware of that, you guys are planning to do larger community deals or sort of, um, you know, you're creating that more population of whatnot, that we have to be willing to, to serve that need if it comes down the road. Um, but it certainly comes at a, at a cost, for sure. Uh, to be, uh, virtual kitchens, it's staying more.
One of the other considerations is if there is-
There's a space. Yeah.
There doesn't have to be an exclusivity here. I mean, if we have some of the kinds of emergencies that we're talking about, for contemplating, you're probably gonna need more than one building to take care of everybody, so. Or, you know, if we have, if we have two or three buildings in town that are capable of doing that, I think it's great.
And that's exactly what I was, I was saying, we don't have to be the main focus, is all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Also, when I, the, the, yes, so, but I'm also thinking of it in terms of, not that it's a state, right? Please, I hear, I want people to gather for a, I think you went to one, so he wants to use that for a meeting or a social gathering, just another question.
All right, you have five minutes and you've been on time, what are the next steps and where are we in our timeline?
Oh, great question. Okay, so I apologize, I'm not able to pull this up at the moment. Um, I think what we want to do is, I think we got really good feedback from the interior, really. Um, I think the interiors, we saw a lot of developments happening and primarily just showing the product as well. Uh, I think we got a lot of really good feedback on those spaces as well. Um, our goal is to sort of take the feedback from today to create, um, the final, um, designer consideration set. What we'd like to do though, however, is have one on repeat with you all, uh, prior to that, that's, you know, work. Um, and probably a month is, is more than sufficient time. Uh, if you guys are available, we need earlier than that, that would probably be, uh, for these twelve, kind of, ways to serve.
What do you, what do you, you mean, that's a community?
I, I don't wanna go back to the drawing board of-
No, I, yeah.
You know, and you want, you know, like what you-
What she's saying, I think, we're making sure we're taking all the community input that we've brought in, all the years, to really put into this, this project. Cause I know there's a lot of history on this that we have.
Probably not going back to the drawing boards necessarily, but at least when we get to a, a final or course.
Where they come back with some more, uh, preparing pictures and then we have a, a stage where then the community can kind of come through and look at the stuff, does that-
Yeah, I think we need something because I, I think what I would like to see, I guess, is that to come back with the secondary, I mean, with the input that we've put in today, I have a feeling that we're hopefully kind of heading in the right direction. But at that time, I, I think the community somewhere needs to be involved in it. So there's some choices we may not, right, with, with regular or not, is that something that you want the community to have say, this is what we like, this is what we don't like, or anything like that? What you're talking about is a semi-final.
Yeah, I think we're talking about another work session like this, but, um, I guess, I hadn't thought about the community info, but one thing that we could do, is I think when, when we do that, we'll have options that are pretty much made with a few variations amongst them, right? Um, and what we could do would, would be for, for basically bring those in large boards. Like with, not every image maybe, but this corner, that corner, a couple interiors and say, all right, in, in the things that we're talking about in particular. Maybe more to show y'all in a work session and then, you know, we have a work session for a few hours in the morning and then say there's an open house for public and we can put them up on boards around it, have people come in and, we can always, what we've done in the past is sometimes we'll do a, like a voting type of thing where people get a sticker and like, hey, put this, this posted on the one you like for this and this one on the one you like for that. Then whether we, y'all agree to take that or not on the input, I think is the question, but, um, that seems to be a good way we've handled it in the past on a situation like this, like, yeah, you're not, we're not saying, hey, I mean, some of the input, you know, like it is like, do we really do this building? How much money are we spending? Like, well, that's a different conversation, but, yeah, like very focused, like, hey, we got to this point on this building, we're looking at this corner slide, this corner slide, this detailing, this detailing, we'd love input, you know, this is the plans, this is where they are. People come in and then they're gonna come in, they're gonna probably wanna talk to somebody. Or at least somebody, have somebody here to listen. And as long as we do that, I think, that's, that's usually a pretty good approach. Um, you're not gonna make everybody happy, you're not gonna be able to accommodate everybody's thoughts, but you listen.
We, I mean, we understand now, but we also know that the community does have some real interest in this. Aside from that first try that you had on that.
Yeah.
There is some interest in this. But we need to do that.
Yeah.
That's-
And I'd love to do that, like, potentially the same, the same type of thing, so we would, even in the morning, kind of show you the options into the, you know, as a group. And then we decide whether we put them all up or not, you know, if you're like, I hate, nobody likes this one, don't put it up. We don't put it up and then we can be here to answer questions and obviously y'all can be here, the public comes in. Have an open house for a few hours.
You know, some of the questions that we asked today, I think, are the questions that folks are gonna be asking, why couldn't we do this? Well, because this is how much more it's gonna cost, at least, these are the issues with it.
Yeah.
So, and we're the end of February, is what, I mean?
Well, totally.
Actually, that's the, the four weeks, it's February fifth.
Okay.
That's actually good.
Yeah, I've got this, uh, have a sort of tentative date on here, that's great, is it done?
Saturday.
That is Saturday, okay. You would, you don't have due date of the date.
Tuesday?
No, that, that's fine, I have the eight on here. Um, I guess my question is, yeah, that's fine, Saturday is fine. I would just follow up on that. The question for you, um, Shannon, and for the council as well, is we're, we're planning to sort of recapture our documentation set into a sign deliverable um, that you can use for, uh, funding applications as well. Um, and so our target for that was actually the end of the month, we want to wait till after, uh, that presentation and, um, open house. Uh, we can certainly push that a couple weeks, that's no problem. I definitely don't wanna put out there that we've got, you know, a set going to the pricing, that's really incorporated feedback, et cetera, so.
I think more, I guess it all depends on your schedules, I mean, we have schedules, obviously, I know both of our teams are in basketball and soccer and weekends are busy, but, um, if we can even move it up, like, we could do this work we're talking about in less than a month. So if we can do, uh, another meeting, open house in less than a month, then we can stick with the schedule of the drawings.
How much company real, I mean?
I mean, well, to be honest with you, we didn't start, um, we did all, most of that rendering work in the last, since we met on Tuesday, so, um, two weeks would be enough.
That puts us at January twenty-second, what is that, January twenty-second? It's probably Saturday and the twenty-ninth. I haven't got, twenty-ninth, I have that. I'm the twenty-second, I'm on that there. So, I'm like, oh, the twenty-ninth. Okay, there's two that can't be there, the twenty-ninth, the twenty-second. Twenty-second, it can't be, okay.
All right.
We talked about that before.
Oh, yeah, we did do this before.
Is it possible to do it in a, I don't know, if they can do it like in an afternoon or a meeting, like, a lot of those are worth that, huh?
Well, this is like a whole house, et cetera, it's kind of a good.
Well, I mean, I can't do it the same day.
We did, yeah, we did, uh, yeah. I was thinking if we did a Friday for us at the council or something, and then the open house could be on a Saturday, we'd have, we'd have sort of the regular acts be there. Even though I'd like to be there, but you know what I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's an option for me, but I don't know if it's not.
Kevin, you're not available all that week, correct?
Uh, from the fifteenth through the twenty-second.
So if we're talking about a Friday afternoon, we're talking two weeks, at least two weeks out, we're talking about the twenty, and I might not be available, are they?
I won't be available.
Yeah, that's, I actually have a board meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I think February fifth, how's February fifth looking for you?
My question to you, Shannon, is does that impact any grants that we're able to apply for? Not that, but I think we need to look something else.
So you're not, well, we'll sit down. Oh, well, they're finalizing that now, so I think we have interior plans at least that we can show, even if we don't have full exterior renderings. And they will be going to the congressional documentation in mid-March. Um, as far, I just was made aware of a homeland security grant that may allow us to apply for the E and C portion of it. Um, I don't think that the February fifth impacted too much. Um, but it will, it will be a quick turnout.
Am I the only one that can make it on the twenty-second? Cause I, I guess, I'll, I'll point, put this out there, I don't feel strongly about the exterior. I don't have any really strong feelings, I think they all look great, I think all the ideas are great. So I'm not trying to skip out on it, but if it works for anybody else, I'm not gonna go back. I'm not gonna go back to saying, say, I can't, like, not one, like, just throwing that out there, like, I would like to be here, but, if we need to make this happen, I'm okay. Possibly zoom in, I could possibly zoom in on the twenty-second, too.
You're good. I'm busy, buddy, better.
Fine.
Your main, you know, if you're okay.
Yeah, I'll try to zoom in.
Your main thing was, gosh, I get that.
Yeah. I think that's everything.
I think we're all there.
Right, yeah, so I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, we could do the same time, nine to twelve, and then we'll, we're gonna come in at eight, kind of get things set up. And then, then we can go into the afternoon session, like, twelve-thirty, one o'clock.
We might not need the full three hours if we're just going over updates from what we've shown, so it could be,
We start at ten.
Or do, or do, yeah, or do nine to eleven and then have the public come in earlier, so anyway.
Yeah, nine to eleven, and then maybe we take a one-hour break, perhaps something to eat before we go to the hood.
That's what I was gonna say, that would give us a, a little bit of a break.
Okay, so nine to eleven, eleven to twelve, a break, so we're gonna set up, and then twelve to three for public input?
Sure. And how do we advertise it to the public?
We push it on the website, we can push it out, get an email blast, we can certainly send it up at the post, on a radar board.
Yeah.
We, we're looking at our council members to get the word out there.
Yeah, the, certainly the, um, the weekend, and that will be coming out on Friday, so that would be your, uh, council, you know, community updates.
Community updates, a separate email, we can do an email blast starting on Monday. Um, but yeah, if our council can get the word out there, that would help too.
Yes. Yes, we would be, uh.
Oh, and if, you know, as part of that, we could always provide you images, uh, of what we're gonna show, so like, you could do, like, if people can't make it, like, right af, the day after, you can put up a separate splash page on our website or something, with an email address for people to comment on.
Perfect.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Big picture, like, we got everything we were hoping to get out today, we were able to do, so I'm really happy and I appreciate everybody's input and discussions today, cause, you know, honestly, staying on schedule is important for all of us, it's important for y'all to get this thing moving and keep it moving for funding, it's important for us to stay on our budget of our fee and, so the quicker we can, the more we do this and have discussion and make decisions is great, um, so I'm excited to go back and, back and focus.
My question, do you wanna close the work session so that we can all have our Saturday?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, for the closing.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, good.